Good afternoon, welcome to the Spalding County Board of Commissioners work session. It is Monday, May 6, 2024 at 3:00 PM. At this time, I'd like to ask everybody to please silence your cell phones and other electronic devices. I'd like to ask the county manager to say the invocation, and then Commissioner Rita Johnson from District 3 to lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Let's pray. Father God, thank you for this time together. Thank you for the opportunity to be a part of the leadership team to guide our community forward. Pray, Lord, that you would watch over us, that you would lead and guide us as we make the decisions that you would have for us to make. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. If you would please join me in the Pledge to our Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to amend the agenda to include a discussion on intergovernmental agreement between Spalding County Senate's enforcement and the Spalding County State Court to supervise probationers. And I would like to make this item number eight. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. All right. At this time, let's start the agenda with MSI Benefit Group presentation. Director Neville?
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Ashley Gilder with MSI Benefits Group. And as the employee benefits broker and consultant for the county, we are ultimately responsible for the overall management of your health and welfare employee benefit plans. So in preparation for the benefits that are scheduled to renew July 1st, we did initiate comprehensive market evaluations. And included in this presentation is an overview of those market analysis, and then ultimately the recommendations for the 7-1 2024 benefits plan year. All right. So moving on to the next slide here, we just have a quick 23-24 renewal debrief. This is really just a recap of what transpired last year to serve as a reference point. So you see here with medical, you did renew with Cigna, with really the main change here just being the contract basis. So you are on a self-insured contract basis, which means that you essentially pay fixed costs for administrative-related expenses, and then you fund claims as they come in each month up to a certain threshold per claimant, at which time you are covered under stock loss catastrophic claimant protection. So there were no change to employee benefits, and there were no change to deductions last year. Now, the pharmacy last year, that was going to be the biggest change, and you did decide to move from Cigna Express Scripts to Veracity Pro Care in order to leverage the savings opportunity right at excess of $900,000. So we will review health plan, performance plan year-to-date, and you are on track to save and really recoup those savings right in excess of the $900,000. Dental, you did renew with Cigna. There were no changes there to employee plan benefits or deductions. Vision, you moved from Cigna. Again, no change to plan benefits with an actual decrease to employee deductions for vision. And then life and disability renewed with Anthem. So moving on to the next slide here, we just had the health plan spend analysis. A lot of numbers on here, I know. It's just breaking down the total fixed cost, which is comprised of the admin network fees and that stock loss premium that you pay for catastrophic claimant exposure, which gets you to your total fixed cost. And then you have the claims piece of it. So I won't bore you to death and go through every single number. The main number I want you to focus on here is at the bottom, and you see where it says "medical loss ratio." This is comparing just claims to the maximum claims liability that you will pay under the contract. And the reason this is important is because this is a number that underwriters look very heavily at when calculating your renewal. So you see that plan year-to-date, your medical loss ratio is right at 40, it's hard for me to see that, but it's right at 46%, 46.8%. And that is well below target. So the carrier's target loss ratio is 80%. So overall, plan year-to-date, you are performing very, very well. We, of course, have some months to go, but this is certainly exciting, you know, for us to see. Moving on to the next slide here is the pharmacy savings. So, you know, as a reminder, we did move from Express Scripts to Pro Care Veracity. One of the main reasons here being so that we could partake in their cost mitigation programs that they make available to employees. So the main savings are really derived from two main programs. There's going to be the specialty savings or manufacturer assistance program, where you see that has accounted for over $300,000 in savings. And then there's the personal importation savings program, which is accounting for right at $270,000 plan year-to-date. This allows employees to get their medications completely free of charge and mailed from Canada. So you see here where the pharmacy savings have been great. Once you annualize it forward, we're looking at savings right around the $1 million mark. And this is a big reason why we have seen claims, you know, come very far down thus far, which has really helped in securing a favorable renewal. Now, we did look at potentially covering weight loss medications. As of today, weight loss medications or expensive diabetes drug medications are only covered with a diabetes diagnosis. However, if we were to cover weight loss drugs without a diabetes diagnosis, which is not common, it would completely wipe away those savings. So it would result in plan spend, you know, right around the $600,000 range. So that is not a change that we are recommending at this time. Certainly, this is a very prevalent hot topic, and it's something that we will continue to evaluate moving forward. So for the health plan, again, one of the big components here is the stock loss or catastrophic claimant protection. So each year, we do initiate a comprehensive market evaluation, and you'll see here where we did go to roughly 15 markets. Now, while many of them declined to quote or were not competitive with Cigna, we did still use those competitive quotes in our negotiations with Cigna to get them down on their renewal offering. So on this slide here is the current Cigna renewal, or I'm sorry, is the current fixed costs and fees and claims under the current contract as compared to the renewal. This is the final renewal. We were able to get Cigna to come down roughly $30,000 in fixed costs. So you'll see, starting at the annual admin fees, they are calling for a very minimal increase here of .7%. And then the stock loss premium, that's where we're seeing the biggest increase. This is going to be driven by just some large claimant activity, which is expected every year. So that brings the annual fixed cost to a roughly 10% increase. And then the best part is the expected claim. So because claims are performing well thus far, coupled with the pharmacy savings and claims really going down there, they are calling for an overall decrease to expected claims of roughly $720,000. So that brings the total annual fixed cost plus expected claims down almost $600,000 than the current year. So it brings the total annual fixed cost plus expected claims from 8.4 to 7.8.
And we know that can change any given time, right?
Right. So this is just in accordance under the stock loss contract. But yes, actual claims are actually much lower than this. And then we show here the current employee deductions. We are proposing that these do not change, and again, you know, to have no change there to benefits or deductions, bringing the county net annual health plan costs from $7.4 million to $6.8 million. Again, like you said, you know, claims are claims. They're going to change. They fluctuate from month to month. This is just in accordance to the stock loss contract and where underwriters are projecting those expected claims to be. So overall, they are calling for a decrease here of roughly $600,000 to fixed costs and Moving on to the dental plan. So Cigna did issue a minimal below-market trend increase here of 5%. We are proposing that the county absorb this increase so as to allow the employee benefit plans and deductions to, again, remain the exact same. Moving on to basic life, AD&amp;D, and the wellness program. So these are two benefits that the county currently provides at no cost to employees. So the basic life and AD&amp;D benefit is provided at 1.5 times an annual salary, up to $225,000 for all employees. And the total cost to the county for providing this benefit is right at $53,000. Now, the wellness program is also a benefit that is provided to employees by the county at no cost to them, and it allows them to get rewarded for living a healthy lifestyle and partaking in daily wellness activities. So you see here where the total rewards paid out this year is $10,950, and then the total cost, which is just that fee multiplied out, is $21,472. So the total cost to the county for providing this wellness benefit is $32,422. So the county has expressed interest in really promoting this benefit. So that is something that we will be doing, not only in open enrollment, but also throughout the year.
Can you give a good example? And I love that rewards on there, but we've taken, what have we taken advantage of?
So if employees log in and they attach basically a fitness tracker, you know, to the app, they can get rewarded. And then there's also daily, daily activities and challenges that are set up through the app that employees can participate in and then get rewarded. So yeah, it's a great benefit, and like I said, something that we're certainly going to continue to promote.
So the amount that was paid out was $10,950, and the cost to the county was $32,422?
Correct, in total. So that was the rewards component of it.
Rewards.
And then there's also a per employee per month fee that the county is currently paying for.
So we're, hold on, so we're paying a per employee per month fee to have this available?
Correct.
So we're paying $21,472 so that our employees can have access to a program that's paying them $11,000?
So it's paying them, I believe it's $300, up to $300 is what they can get rewarded. So, and then that is essentially billed to the county as an invoice.
So, so in addition to having to pay you to have the program, we, we pay the cost of the program?
Correct. And this is through an outside vendor, so I'm just the in-between.
Anybody else seen the math I'm doing?
I just look at the reward savings that they're getting. I'd more like to know about the employees that are participating in this, out of the 400 employees that we have. Do we have a lot of employees participating in this?
Maybe about 15%.
Judge says he's participating.
That's why the measure is worth it.
Okay, so we need more people participating in it so that we can get...
Well, I mean, this is, this is the kind of thing I would, I would, I've seen before with others, like if you took a no smoking class and this kind of stuff, you get whatever, or you schedule your physicals or your dental cleanups and you get whatever. But like, if I'm gonna have to download an app and then have my insurance company track my activities via Fitbit, no, no money's worth of doing that. So, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I guess because people do it, like on your, people do it all the time, on their, on their, on their app, you know, on their iPhones. I mean, you do it anyway. So why, I'm just saying, why don't I get a benefit from your health insurance company if you're doing it anyway?
Well, I, again, it might, it might be easier. We're, we're rewarding our employees $11,000 by spending $32,000.
Because we don't have the numbers, we don't have enough people. My thing is, I hear what you're saying?
But if, if more people took advantage of it, we would just have to pay more. Because we're the ones still paying it, but in order to access their app to pay them, for us to pay them, is $21,000 a year.
I think I look at the longevity of it. I think, as you, you know, we probably look at the prevention of health, and, you know, that will eventually, hopefully, will draw the health insurance down if we have more healthy employees at the end of the day. I mean, I mean, right now, it would be more, but if you look at it, if we got more people involved in this program and people were living healthier lives, then the odds of them actually, you know, the odds of them actually having used their health insurance outside the normal would be less than what we're doing now. I'm worried about like...
I'm just saying, $21,472 seems like a lot to run now.
I mean, it's probably, we didn't mention this.
We get a $5,000 benefit from Cigna. So that money that we get from Cigna, so to speak, is going straight to that, so it's the health money coming out of our pockets right now.
But would we not still get that if we didn't have this?
Yeah, we'd have to use it for something similar to this.
Right. So it's a wellness...
I see what you're saying. So this would have to go towards, maybe there's another plan that could be cheaper than this, though, or something that we could put that money to.
But it's gotta be wellness related.
No, yeah. I just think overall, you know, we're talking about longevity, we're talking about the next couple of years. We don't know what the insurance rates are gonna be, claim load's gonna be. This is just a good idea on our part so that our employees hopefully are using this more so that we can prevent those claims from coming, you know. Not every, not everyone, but it'll, you know, if you're healthier, odds of you're not doing it are better.
And this is not a new benefit. It is something that has been in place for years. And like Miles said, it is something that can be, you know, submitted for reimbursement and is being submitted for reimbursement to Cigna. So while it is, you know, money coming out of your pocket, it is reimbursable.
Yeah, I would just kinda like to see how we would get more of our employees involved in this.
Right.
That's where I'm at. I mean, you know, just, but that's another conversation for another day.
Yeah, and that is exactly why, you know, I brought it up today, is because that is a conversation that we've all had. And how, you know, to get this in front of employees, make sure they understand that it's a benefit available to them, you know, to hopefully change, you know, and help curb plan spend. That is the ultimate goal of a health and wellbeing solution.
Yeah, people are doing it anyway, so.
I have a question. You said this benefit has always been there. We've only been back with, we're, we're self-insured, right?
We are.
Okay.
But the program has been there for a number of years under MSI.
A long, a very long time. And it's actually through Virgin Pulse. It's a separate program from Cigna. So it's an overall company, they're kind of like a broker, if you will, in the wellness space, similar to what we do, but just, you know, targeted to wellness. So it's Wellness IQ, and then the program is actually offered through Virgin Pulse.
I'm gonna kinda go back with them a little bit to talk about what you talked about, the pharmacy piece, because y'all, y'all missed that piece. If you go back and look at it, there's a savings of, we're saying of $900,000. If I'm saying this correct, right?
Yes.
Do we not have this in writing, or we can have it? I mean, we can look.
This is it right here. And I think this is on page, because this was an area we had been talking about, just so you don't know.
Yes, okay. So yeah, if you flip to slide four, so this is going to be the pharmacy savings slide. So yes, one of the biggest changes last year was carving out that pharmacy component. So moving from Cigna to, I'm sorry, moving from Cigna Express Scripts to Veracity Pro Care. And one of the biggest reasons was to leverage a savings opportunity that they were projecting at the renewal last year of upwards of $900,000. And the intent, of course, is never for employees to go without their medications. It's just to leverage those savings opportunities through their cost mitigation programs. The two main cost mitigation programs here are the personal importation savings program, which allows employees to get their medication completely free of charge from Canada. There have been 139 scripts filled through that program alone. And then there's the specialty savings program, which allows employees to tap into manufacturer assistance programs, allowing them to get their medications at little to no charge. And there had been 63 scripts filled under that program plan year-to-date. So the total savings under the pharmacy plan this year thus far is right at $600,000, I believe it is. And then it's projecting out to be $1 million in savings by year-end.
So my concern with this is while it's good to say that people can go and call the 800 number, that's the whole purpose of having insurance, is so you don't have to call to get on the patient assistance program. That's what you do when you don't have insurance, because anybody can call the 800 number and give them their information and give them their income data, and maybe or may not be eligible. But if you work for somebody, like our folks work for us, the expectation is part of the benefit is that you don't have to go out and try to figure out how you're gonna get your medicine. And then the second part for me is that while, you know, you, you say there's 69 people who benefited from here and 123 people here, we don't really know that. What we do know that that critical medications that people have needed for diabetes, cholesterol, and high blood pressure have not been available to them.
So I was pers, I know at the very beginning, there was a lot of noise and there was a lot of disruption. Unfortunately, when you move pharmacy benefits, you know, it's, it's, it's a tough one to go through. I personally reviewed every single member record that was impacted. There were over 100 members in which were eligible for one of these programs, meaning they took a specialty medication in which required either a prior authorization or action needed to enroll in one of these programs. Now, let's say we're not with Veracity, we're just still with Cigna. If you are on a specialty medication, there are still steps involved in order to get that medication, meaning prior ops are required, doctors must submit proof of medical necessity, and this is outside of Veracity. This is with every single insurance care. And this is outside of Veracity. This is with every single insurance carrier.
Totally understand that, but if you're already, have already gone through, I've taken the first line medicine, taken the second line. Now my doctor says I need this one, I'm on that one, and now that I've switched insurance.
Yes, sir.
They're saying to me like you're. Yeah, that's, that's never good. And that is what our employees experience.
Right.
And so even some of our, uh, one of our commissioners, the same thing. So. The problem for me in picking a pharmacy plan is, it's great when you can say there's three hundred thousand dollars can be saved. If you call the eight hundred number and fill out all the papers. But when you, when you have insurance already and you have a job with the government. Who is providing you benefits, why do you have to go out and do all this squirrel work to be able to get the benefits that you've been getting all along? That's the problem for me. And it's a problem for our employees, I believe, because we're making them not just do an extra step. We're making them do lots of steps to get the same benefits they were getting. So they're not, they're not benefiting in the way. I know on paper it looks like that there is that saving. But yeah, the average employee is not, not having warm and fuzzy by having to go through all of these steps. And if it's taking you twenty years to get to the medicine that you need, you're not trying to have to tell somebody again that I gotta go through all these steps. That's the biggest problem I have.
And I got a question about that, maybe what you said before. Um, that happened, of course, year one, because I know we were, we had changed over to a new, this new program. Now that we're up on renewal time and we're now in year two.
That will not happen again.
That's what I'm wondering.
Yes. And so that's why a transition from a farm, in pharmacy is so tough. Because Cigna would not provide us a file showing all open prior authorizations, which means there was no way for that to be loaded in the system. Which required Veracity to essentially start from, you know, zero in obtaining all of that information. Even though, I hear you, I know people had gone through it and there's nothing more frustrating than that. Now, I do want to confirm that Veracity did provide overrides for every single employee. Um, who was trying to get a medication and couldn't because they were still waiting on documentation. So there was never someone who was truly going without. And like I said.
That's not true, young lady. That is not true. There were people who went months without their medication.
And so by the first quarter, by the end of first quarter, seventy-nine of the eighty-nine people. Were all receiving their medications and enrolled in the programs.
I hear what you're saying, but if we took a survey of the people that, who's, the employees and their families, that's not the number that we're gonna get. I mean, at least for six months, Commissioner Ryan sat here and, and asked every single meeting. Why he cannot get his medicine that he's been taking for the last three or four years.
And we have connected on that and there is a thorough explanation as to why, but I cannot disclose that in a public setting.
And, and that's fine, but, but when we decided to change to Veracity as we were, you know, moving ourselves forward. And this self-insured state, this is a stuff that's important. When you're telling us that there won't be any changes in the pharmacy plan, we're telling them that there's no changes. And there were clearly big roadblocks that came up that we, we should have had knowledge of. And I'm just not good with it. I mean, I, I don't, I'm not saying not to go with Veracity. But on the, on, if we gotta just count the money and count, um, employee satisfaction. For me, employee satisfaction is much more important than being able to save two hundred thousand dollars on a medical plan.
And I do agree, communication should have been better, and that's on us. And I will take the blame for that all day. And I very much apologize to y'all and everyone who was impacted. Yes, while there were no, you know, benefit changes, deductions weren't changing. There were obviously a lot of changes, you know, when it came to, uh, providers having to resubmit those prior authorizations. And steps being taken for them to get the medication at no charge, which yes, is that a benefit, of course. But there's still, you know, a few steps that they do have to take in order to obtain that. So that is on us. I very much apologize for that communication misstep. It could have been handled better. It will be handled better moving forward. I will say, ever since we got through that initial three-month kind of transition phase. I have not been aware of any, you know, really employee pushback, employees not getting their meds. From, you know, as far as I know.
Okay, so what you said, which is, we're in year two now, so we won't necessarily anticipate that. But I think you said this, so when new employees do come, these are the new employees. That we expect that the system will be a whole lot better for those new employees than it was.
It's, our team actually comes out onsite to meet with new hires, um, every single month. And yes, they do explain to them, you know, as part of the pharmacy program. If they are on a specialty medication, they do need to log into Veracity to enroll, which will allow them to obtain that medication at little to no cost.
So are you saying that they no longer have to go through the process of first-line formulary, second-line formulary before they can get to the specialty medicine?
Well, that requirement, so you're talking about step therapy, where if you're taking a certain medication, you have to require. Or you have to take prior medications in order to get it. So yes, that would apply to any new hire as well, but that's going to be wherever they go. So every carrier requires step therapy for specialty medications. And those caveats are put into plans really to protect the employer.
But if you have already gone through that, you are on a medication that is your permanent medication. Just because you change insurance does not mean that you should have to go through the same process. That is what I'm trying to.
Yeah, but I think she's saying that's an industry thing. I don't think.
No, it, it's not.
No.
It's not. It is not. I'm, I worked at the hospital. I walked from my last job into the hospital. And when I went to the pharmacy to get my prescriptions filled, no one challenged me about going back through a different formulary and I was going to a different. I went from Tricare to Tenet, no change. Now, I'm just simply saying, because I have this. Question about this having happened, I, you know, why would, why would somebody come to work here? If they know that their child who has epilepsy has to go back through a process all over again to be recertified. To get to that third level specialty medication.
Um, and so every plan, every provider, they can appeal these decisions. And at the end of the day, the pharmacy will adhere to exactly what that provider is saying. So if they say absolutely not, they've already tried these medications, they will unequivocally get that medication. It's just the provider has to submit that necessary information. And when I was reviewing line by line, every single member record of who was impacted in those first couple of months. Many of times, I hate to say it, it falls on the provider because they haven't been providing the necessary documentation.
But if you're the provider, I'm the M.D., I've gone through this with this patient. They've been my patient ten or fifteen years. And then I get another letter saying, I need you to pre-authorize them to take the same medicine. That they were taking, or I need you to put them back on a first-line medicine because we're here. I mean, you know, they don't, they don't do stuff for free. And if you're not in the doctor's office, if they got to do special stuff for you, somebody gotta pay for that. Uh, and I hear what you're saying, and I know that's your job to sell what you're saying, but I'm talking about what happens in real life. And what happens to our clients, our, our employees here. Who are expecting the least amount of change, um, with their insurance coverage. And I've been here a little bit longer than y'all, and we have had some glitches when we have changed insurance. We had a huge glitch just in the amount of money that it cost us that we didn't even know we were spending, which is not your problem. But, but if, if there were six million dollars that showed up because we were paying money into another account. Why are we beating people down about three hundred thousand dollars that they could call the eight hundred number? And maybe be able to become eligible if they fill out all the papers, when we could just have a pharmacy coverage that would cover them? That, that's, that's my thing. Is this the only thing that we are being offered? Or is there not another prescription? How is this different from?
Yeah, is it, is it done like this because there's a significant cost savings to the county to make everyone jump through an extra hoop? And it saves us a zillion dollars, like, you know what I mean?
Everyone has jumped through the hoop last year because that was our first year. The only ones who are having to jump through hoops now are new hires.
The new people.
New hires on a specialty medication, which is not all new hires.
And when I made the transition, um, from my previous employer to the county, I had to go through that. I had to start over with all of my medications from step one.
Through Cigna?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, every provider has these steps.
When we've changed three times, I've had to do the same thing with migraine drugs that are specialty medications.
Yeah, but do you have the same, you don't have the same insurance that we have?
No, I don't. But I've changed provide, medical insurance providers over the last seven or eight years, three times. And every single time, I have to stay on my providers to do those preauthorization letters. And, and, but because of the exact same thing, they wanna put me back to a drug I took twenty years ago that didn't work.
And so prior authorizations, no matter who you're with, they are usually only good for a year. So your doctor knows this. They have to resubmit a prior authorization, usually on an annual basis, um, for any medication in which requires a prior authorization. And for these specialty medications, every provider does have, you know, requirements in their policy. Even fully insured contracts with Cigna, you're going to be required to try other medications.
I, I understand what you're saying because clearly if, if you're, if the prior authorization is only for a year. You should see your, have seen your doctor within a year.
Right.
So, so you can't get one without getting the other. And it, and when you leave that appointment and it's the end of the year, your doctor knows that he needs to send X, Y, Z. So, so I, I'm, I'm saying all that to say I, I understand that. I hear what Stephanie's saying, but also we have an insurance policy. We have over five hundred employees and we have over nearly as many dependents. So whatever policy that we have is gonna be different than Stephanie's policy. It should be different than Stephanie's policy, cause she's got ten people.
Very true. It's very different from mine. It's just that that's what I've experienced.
I understand about the annual, so I'm saying, why are we not able to get something better? Because we have a lot of people that were insured. Now, granted, I know we got some old people that were insuring, ensuring, and, and they cost more money. But they're on their specialty meds and they need them. So, so I, I'm not sure what the answer is. I'm just, you know, when I look at this, I'm saying, is this the only one that we're looking at? Do we have anything to compare this to? That says this is the best policy for us.
And if we were to have another company or whatever to do this, would those hoops be crossed again?
That's what I'm saying, but you don't, we didn't know to ask that the last time.
The hoops have been already, I'm just saying, that because it's renewing, the hoops have already been crossed the first time. I mean, she crossed them the first time. So we have to deal with now is the new, the new person that maybe have, that needs those specialty drugs, they're gonna be the ones that cross the hoop.
Right.
Not anybody else.
And there's just not that many people on specialty medications. So for Spalding County, dependents included, there are less than a hundred. So we're not talking about a huge number of impacted. I'm not saying, you know, that discredits what they went through. My heart goes out for them. I can tell you that if my doctor tells me to get on a medication, I wanna be able to get on that medication. So I a hundred percent understand where, you know, everyone is coming from. Um, but when we're talking about, you know, the overall impacted percentage of members. It's honestly very low when you look at the entire population, because there are under a hundred dependents included who are currently on specialty meds.
So we're talking about a total of se, six or seven hundred people? Is that, that would be the full coverage?
From.
About eleven hundred total with, uh, dependents.
Dependents. And over, you said only a hundred of the dependents need specialty meds, and how many employees?
Four fifty-five.
Um, yeah, today we have, it's an average of four fifty-one enrolled.
No, not enrolled, enrolled in specialty medications.
I don't have that on an employee basis, but for members, I mean, when we looked at during the transition, there was less than a hundred overall impacted. I believe there's forty, I was just looking at it actually, fourteen members, um. For the specialty savings and then forty enrolled in the personal importation program, so.
Because you said sixty-nine people.
That's members. Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't have it broken out employees and dependents.
So, yeah, because I'm trying, trying to get to what the numbers are. If you say that total covered is a thousand. You have a hundred dependents and, and, and we don't know how many.
It's a hundred employees and dependents. That's, that's collectively.
Heard you say. I thought you said a hundred.
It's less than a hundred. It's really right around sixty. Sixty people enrolled in these two programs on a specialty medication.
Out of all of our employees?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I would like to see that in writing. Not, not that I believe that you're not telling the truth, but yeah, I, yeah, I'm. We have more old people than that. That are on medicines that require them to not get first line. So, yeah, I would like to see those numbers.
And one of the benefits that I do appreciate is, um, the fact that if we have someone that is struggling to get on. The medication that they're looking to get back on, if they're a new hire and they're on a specialty medication and they want that specialty medication. Cause they've jumped through the hoops and they're struggling to get their doctor or their provider to provide that, uh, that prescription. Um, we do have the ability to override.
Right.
Uh, so that's something that is afforded us through this program. And we have provided those overrides until the doctor can take care of business.
Can you define to me what, what you're saying? You have the ability to override, what override?
Allow the medications to be filled.
So, so who is we? You, the insurance company? And, and how is that decision made? I mean, it, it sounds pretty subjective to me.
It's not subjective. They actually work with the provider and they ask the provider, are you, uh. Are you prescribing this medication to this individual previously? If the answer is yes, then we'll override it for a month. Until they get, uh, the paperwork completed so that they can get the prescription sent to them.
And how many people did we, how many of our clients did we do that for?
So I'll have to pull the numbers. I do know by October, seventy-nine of the eighty-nine were resolved. I have it documented of exactly how many overrides were allowed within that, you know, three-month timeframe. So that no one went without. But by October, seventy-nine of the eighty-nine members impacted were enrolled. And then of those ten pending, they were also provided overrides to get their medication. And then within that next month, by October, they were receiving their medication as a result of either their provider submitting the necessary prior authorization documents. Or taking the steps to enroll in the program.
I just really wish Ryan was here. Like I said, he, he can, he has his own set of numbers.
His own story.
And he made it clear to us every single meeting that he could not get his medicine. He, he never talked about. I gotta go back and see my doctor, blah, 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 blah. I think somebody had to intervene. So yeah. I don't have this, the county insurance, but if I try to look at it for somebody else who is in need. All I have to go by is the people who've complained to us about it.
Yep.
So, you know, we, like I said, we can look at the numbers, but I, I just, I'm not comfortable. This may be a very good plan, but what do we have to compare it to? I mean.
That's the problem, I think. Cause there is no, there's really no one.
Well, I mean, clearly there's something. I mean, there's express script, there's blah, blah, blah. I mean, there's something else. People are obviously using something else. It's just, you know, I, we don't. These might be good numbers for them, but in, in making a decision on which is the best way to go for us, if you don't have anything to compare to this. How do you really know what you, you're getting?
So if you went back to Cigna Express Scripts, claim spend will go up roughly a million dollars. And employees will no longer have the ability to obtain these medications at no charge. So the personal importation program goes away. There's currently forty enrolled who are receiving their specialty meds at zero dollars. That will go away. They will then pay the specialty co-pay. Um, so you have that component of it, then you have the personal importation program of it. Um, I'm sorry, then you have the specialty savings program where approximately twenty people are getting those medications at little to no charge. Um, they will be impacted. They will no longer be able to tap into those manufacturer programs. Um, and then you have, you know, the claim spend go, going up roughly a million dollars.
So you, you're saying the people who are tapping in the specialty program, it's not just our employees. Anybody can tap into the specialty program if you apply. Are you saying because they're county employees?
They can only do it through this plan because specialty drugs are excluded. And then Veracity is there to help them apply for these manufactured drug programs. So these are char, these are organizations that are filed as charitable organizations. And they only allow employees to top it, tap into those funds, um, if they are low income, if they cannot afford it. So if they have an affordable option through their health plan, you absolutely cannot tap into those funds, which is why specialty drugs.
Affordable option, do we? We didn't have an affordable option. See, I hear what you're saying.
For a lo, a much lower cost than they were previously.
But you can go to Pfizer or Merck or any of those places, and if they have a specialty medicine plan that allows you to be at, if you meet the income. that allows you to be, if you meet the income requirement.
You have to jump through hoops, just like you have to do today.
Right, I mean, anybody has to apply, but I'm saying because they're our employees, why are we making them do that? Why can't they just?
Regardless.
No ma'am, we don't have to do it, we can find some insurance, we can find pharmacy services that would better serve them. If we were able to function minus six million dollars that we didn't think we had, we couldn't pay a million dollars more so they can get the dip pharmacy covered?
Everyone's getting their pharmacy.
I know that's not your question, I'm asking.
Yeah.
Right. I, I always hate bringing in federal politics to the local level, but in, in oh eight, when I was getting my specialty in, in government healthcare economics, we studied the Affordable Care Act and here, and we predicted people would be importing their drugs from Canada. And here we are in twenty twenty-four and our employees are on a personal importation program to import our drugs from Canada because our government has made them so expensive.
No, the government doesn't make them expensive, it's the pharmaceutical companies who's making all the money.
Who have what's called carve-outs from the government, which makes them have to monopoly price. And that's why the Canadian government doesn't do that, which is why they're cheaper in Canada and we have to import them across the border.
I mean, you can get them in Mexico too, but.
Even though they're made here and then taken there and then we have to bring them back. So you'd think it would be more expensive because they've traveled more, but because of the government intervention, because of the overregulation that they don't have in Canada and, uh, in Canada and Mexico, like.
I mean, that's why people go to Europe to get treatment for HIV.
Chairman, let's bring it back.
This is wild. We're having to be imported from Canada.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to see, like I said, the numbers that I asked her to share, I would like to see that, but I, 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 I never like to look at insurance when the only thing you give us is what's in front of us. Now, maybe y'all covered this before I got here, but what were the real numbers for us? We're just talking about pharmacy services here.
They did cover those, yes ma'am.
Okay, so what was our expenditure in terms of how much we paid ourselves in premiums and how much we paid out in claims?
That was page three, I believe. We should talk about the medical loss ratio, if I'm not mistaken.
Let's, if we could, let's just go ahead and finish the briefing. Everybody get your questions ready and then we'll finish the briefing, find out the end results and then come back and say, all right, we want to pick at these two or three issues.
So, yes, just to, you know, quick debrief on slide three. Um, this outlines the total cost for the health plan, plan year to date. It breaks down the fixed costs, which is comprised of the admin network fees and the stop-loss or catastrophic claimant premium that you're paying. And then it's looking at actual gross claims by month. So you'll see where the total gross claims um are right at three point seven million. You have had a number of large claimants which did impact the renewal that you've received reimbursements for under the stop-loss policy of eight hundred and forty-two thousand. So the actual net claims thus far is right at two point eight million. When you compare that to the maximum claims liability under the stop-loss contract, it brings you to a loss ratio of forty-six point eight percent, which is very good.
She, I think she compared that to, if I'm not mistaken, the average being eighty percent, you said, right?
About it, yes.
So we're at forty-six point eight percent.
So, so I, I, help me understand what the medical loss ratio is.
Okay, so the maximum claims liability or the attachment point, um, that's essentially the maximum that you would pay in claims under the stop-loss contract. So um it is set by underwriters as part of the renewal as a claims factor. It is then multiplied out by the enrollment each month to serve as just a reference point in comparison to actual claims. So it's essentially just the maximum claims that you would pay under the contract. We compare that to what the actual claims are.
So the attachment point is not the maximum claim we could pay out?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and what we paid out so far is almost three million dollars?
Um, yes, it's two point eight. And so when you compare those two, it gets you to forty-six point eight percent, which is very good. Um, we do of course have more months, you know, to come, so we'll see how the, the overall year shakes out. But as of right now, you're at forty-six point eight percent, which is very good, is the carrier's target loss ratio is eighty percent. So this coupled with the pharmacy savings has resulted in a very favorable health plan renewal, um, which we were reviewing, I believe, when, when y'all came in. So if y'all are good with the health plan performance piece of it, the pharmacy savings piece of it, we'll jump to that health plan piece.
Um, I, I guess y'all asked questions, what, what are our folks saying about the plan in itself? I mean, that they're getting all the coverage and all the treatments.
I also want to.
Because it doesn't really give us any numbers, I mean, I know it says that to this date, we got one, two, three more months left and we're at two point eight million dollars, where were we last year, where we were the year before at this time? Those are the numbers that are important because we don't have anything to measure that against. It's just like, here's the numbers and, and I say that they're good.
Well, there's Ryan, he's right on time.
Hey, we stalled for you, Ryan.
All right, let's uh finish up with your briefing and then we'll come back and everybody can get their head wrapped around. And Ryan, that's you getting your head wrapped around the pharmacy issue that you went through, okay?
Thank you.
So with the health plan, we do um market the stop-loss piece of it. Every single year, we went to fifteen stop-loss markets, they're provided um detailed claims experience, they're rolling twenty-four a month um is what they are evaluating and we use that in our negotiations with Cigna. So you see, um, it noted here where there are stop-loss carriers who quoted um or declined to quote if they weren't competitive, um, but ultimately the most competitive option is Cigna. We did get them to come down on their fixed cost over thirty-one thousand dollars, which is the biggest piece of it. Um, so you'll see here where the overall health plan is calling for a dollar difference um of a negative six hundred thousand. So there's an increase to fixed costs, but then they are projecting, projecting claims to continue to be lower.
Okay.
Dental plan, um, we did go over this one, so uh Cigna is just issuing a five percent renewal increase here. It is our recommendation that the county absorb this increase in order to keep benefits and deductions as is. Um, basic life and A D and D and wellness also provided by the county and no cost to the employee. No changes here, we will continue to promote wellness. Basic life is provided by the county at a cost of fifty-three thousand and thirty-two thousand for wellness.
The, the dental plan. The, the dental plan still has. At one point, when I came, when I came on the board, I had two cleanings a year and then I, I asked to raise it to three, now it's four, right?
It's four.
Right?
What's a four?
That's what I thought, okay. I missed my last cleaning, so I'm conscious of my.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so moving on to the employee assistance program, so this is currently provided um by Anthem. They are issuing a very small increase here at a hundred and eighty-one dollars, but as the county has expressed interest in really offering a more robust health and well-being, um particularly as it pertains to mental health, we are proposing that the employee assistance program be changed from Anthem to Uliance. You see here where everything in blue is a benefit enhancement, so is just a much more robust offering that is available to employees through Uliance for a minimal increase of four thousand and six hundred and ninety dollars. So it is our recommendation to move from Anthem, which is a somewhat limited benefit, to Uliance.
Is there any, you highlighted where it gets better, is there anything that gets worse?
There is not.
I'm sorry, you, we kind of skipped the mental health piece, I'm sorry, I don't see that on the category.
Yeah, so employee assistance program, it's really just, you know, it provides licensed counselors um for any mental, you know, hate behavioral health.
I see the critical incident stress debriefing.
Yes, and they also have a um critical incident stress team. So if something happens within the community and you need them to come on site to meet with employees um or certain departments, they do so within twenty-four hours. So they do specifically focus um in the county and municipality space.
There's, yeah, and I can see there are a lot of benefits we have that are included in here, that's good.
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that.
The difference for us is a hundred and eighty-one dollars versus forty-six hundred dollars, which to me, good deal.
Okay, so why, why would we want to offer identity theft recovery in employee assistance program? Um, I, I like, I want to hear more about the critical incident stress debriefing because I've talked a lot about that. Does that work for the fire department, does that work for EMS, does that work for the sheriff's department? Is that for everybody? And who decides whether or not it's a critical incident event? Critical, critical incident onsite response time, what does that mean? Somebody actually physically shows up?
Yes.
And uh twenty-four hour crisis line, we didn't have that before with EAP?
Correct.
Well, as everybody knows, I'm pretty big on this kind of stuff that's happened with us in the sheriff's department and I'm one.
Well, the next, the next line says police, fire and EMT specialty emphasis, that's what that covers there, that's included too.
And it's.
I don't know what that means in English. I mean, it says police and fire, it, it, does that mean that somebody is going to be constantly in contact with the police department? If they know that somebody had a, how, how is EAP going to know that somebody was at a scene where a child was killed on the incident?
They're just especially conscious of that, I think.
Yes, exactly, they just have an emphasis on that. So we do, um, as part of the program, we would have a designated account manager. So whether it was the police chief or Miles, whoever, you know, has direct access to that account manager, they can let them know what happened and they will have their team on site to counsel and, you know, work with the employees through that situation within twenty-four hours.
It, it talks here at the bottom, quarterly reporting capabilities.
Yes.
So we could get uh like feedback on how much this is being used at each level. Uh, look, I know that forty-seven hundred dollars isn't nothing, but for what we're getting for the amount of employees we're getting, I, I think that's something certainly worth trying. And then when the quarterly reports come back, if nobody's using it, if like.
Are, that's exactly.
For grant, like that's.
You're, you're saying for a grant, but if you really don't know what it is, I mean, we, we got four letters or four words is telling us. I want to know what that means. I mean, saying customized communication materials doesn't really mean anything to me. Does that mean that somebody's going to come here and talk to our folks? And, and if Miles is the point person, how does Miles know that there was an emergency at the fire department or that the sheriff had a bad night? I'm just, I, I see that it's written, I have an idea of what it's supposed to be, but we, we don't have an explanation about it. What, just tell me this, what is the well-being portal?
So it's a portal that is available to employees um to log into and they have different tools, resources, videos that are available to help them address a number of concerns. Um, the customized communication piece, um, that will be whether it's flyers, posters, um, education materials, webinars, seminars, it can all be customized to Spalding, meaning if there are specific topics that we want to speak on or we want to hit with Spalding's logo on it, it is truly customized to the goals and objectives of the county.
I mean, I'm just one vote, I just don't like to vote on stuff that nobody tells me what it means.
I'm, but I like the fact that these things are included because you don't know when you need it until you need it, that's the main thing.
I mean, to me, it seems some of them redundant because when you call EAP, that's kind of what you expect that they're going to address, so, yeah.
Right, and you see, it certainly does seem that way and it should be, you know, with an EAP, but you see where now with Anthem, it's a very limited, you know, service unfortunately because it is such an important topic.
I got to ask a question. Unlimited face-to-face counseling.
Yeah, Chief Bird's in the audience and he can share with you what we're currently doing and what's going on if you're interested in hearing him.
We would love to hear what Chief Bird has to say.
Thank you. Currently, the state does offer a critical incident stress debriefing after incidents. However, they have two employees from the entire state of Georgia, one specializes in police, one specializes in fire. We use them quite regularly, but onsite is very hard to get him here for the fire specialist because he is spread very thin. So any additional resources we could get would be very helpful. And how it works currently is, um, I have him on speed dial, Chief Polk has him on speed dial. If a certain type of event occurs, we immediately reach out to him, we give him a list of cell phones of the people who were involved that incident, he reaches out. If he views it as he needs to make a trip, he'll make a trip then. Unfortunately, he would love to come every time, but he uses one person.
So, so our, our measurement for the critical incident stress debriefing, which this is unlimited, will be based on response time when you need them and how often we have to actually call for that?
Yes, ma'am, and I will tell you that, and this is off the top of my head, in the last twelve months, I can tell you that we've put people in contact with him about fifteen times. And that was just onsite, and there's been a couple of, probably would prefer him to get onsite if he could have, but was just incapable of. Now, with the twenty-four hour response, it does pose a problem as in they're here, you know, there, our people are twenty-four hours. So if that happens at two o'clock in the morning, they're going to be off on their, their two days off, so we would have to defer till the third day back. So that would pose a little bit of a problem, but not huge, we could start them talking on the phone with the state. Then by the time they come back, get them with a full diffusing when they come back on duty.
Okay.
That's, I just wanted to get.
Thank you, thank you.
That's, you're a good example there.
All right, I'm good with that.
All right, now, we're not voting on this tonight at all. This is the time for us to ask, just like we're doing, ask questions so we understand what, what we're getting into, all right.
Mr. Chairman, was this in our agenda packet? Because I don't remember being able to open this up.
It, it was not in the agenda package, Ms. Ashley brought it this evening.
Okay, because I did not have a chance to review it, I didn't see it, I only saw that one contract in there. Thank you, Ash, for letting us grill you.
Yes, well, we're not over yet, so.
I'm gonna try not to say nothing else.
I saw the last slide, I'm very excited.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna try not to say nothing else.
So this is um a carve-out radiology program. So um this is a savings opportunity for employees, there is no fee associated with it. So for visits, it's essentially just billed as a claim to the county. It allows employees to go to a know-the-cost facility, there is one actually right here in Griffin for um imaging, whether it's uh MRIs, PET scans, CT scans, things of that nature. If they go to a know-the-cost facility, they will receive it at no charge to them. Um, as we all know, you know, imaging in a hospital, it's typically seventy percent overpriced than what a standalone facility charges. So that is why the know-the-cost standalone facilities are able to provide this benefit at no cost to the employee and at a discount to the county. So they essentially have pre-negotiated contracted rates, you know, at all of their facilities. So again, there is no fee tied to it, if no one utilizes it, you're not going to get billed for it. Um, but it is a great savings opportunity for employees, for them to receive these services at no cost to them.
Employee and dependent?
Yes.
MRI, ultrasound and radiology?
Yes, ma'am.
Seems too good to be true.
We know some people who, if we could have got them from GME all over to do this, it would have been a big benefit for us because they walked out of uh GME and said, I gotta do something like this. And we said, oh, go to the hospital, and the hospital said, please get your checkbook out and credit card, this will stop that issue for us.
I broke two fingers last year and they said, go get an X-rayed, and I went and went, how much is it? They're probably fine, and didn't get the X-ray.
That's exactly, yes.
All right.
Okay, and then this just um outlines the benefit recommendations. So I understand that there will likely be further discussion around these. As it stands right now, we are recommending that the health plan be renewed with Cigna and Veracity for a decrease going from seven point four million to six point eight million. Again, this is just that fixed cost and expected claims piece of it. The dental plan, um, we are recommending that renew with Cigna with the county absorbing that minimal increase going from a hundred and forty-six to one fifty-seven. Basic life and A D and D, there is no change there, recommending to renew with Anthem. The wellness program, again, no change there, recommending that the county renew um at thirty-two thousand. And then the employee assistance program, we are proposing that this be added as a new benefit, changing from Anthem to Uliance. And then the carve-out radiology program, which is not currently in place today, we are proposing that that be rolled out as a new benefit offering for employees. So that brings the grand total county annual cost at currently seven point seven million to seven point one million, which is um roughly a five hundred and fifty thousand decrease. which is roughly a five hundred and fifty thousand decrease.
Let me make sure I understand this. I've never seen this happen before.
Yes.
We usually get this as a ten percent, fourteen percent, twenty percent increase. You're coming in to us and saying a seven point three percent decrease?
Yes. I don't get to do that a lot, so. I, I was excited to present this. So yes, it's, it's certainly great news. And again, you know, while the pharmacy was, it did create a lot of noise, especially at the beginning. A large reason why you're seeing this decrease is because that expected claims piece of it, which can be attributed by and large to the pharmacy savings and cost mitigation programs in place.
So we're basically having, we're gonna have, if we decide to do this, this is gonna be good for us. But there's no guarantees for next year, we know that. Because that claim, you know, I'm just saying, you know, claims are good, good change. So if there's ever a year or two benefit from it, then we probably need to benefit from it. Because we don't know what tomorrow's gonna bring, next year. Because they're, they're estimating that claim load, you know, to be down is based on those numbers, but.
Yeah.
It could take one or two or three claims and blow that right out of the pot.
We've got three months.
That's, that's exactly, and we, you know, I'm saying, and that's true, we do have, that's why I said it's an estimate. But that's what we got right now, that's what we are.
Commissioner, oh, excuse me.
I still want to see what our claims were in, in, in twenty-one, what our claims were in twenty-two, what our claims were in twenty-three. Because the numbers have changed, but our people haven't. Our people have gotten older. So, yeah, I wanted to be able to, not, not mad about it being five hundred thousand dollars less, but I think that was part of the reason why we went to being self-insured.
Well, also, we have.
We've got some retirees, I mean, some retired folks who'd have left.
You know, we have less people, remember, we're.
Yeah, we're about a hundred people short.
Yes.
So if we were fully running, it would be a different picture.
Yes.
So it ain't, you didn't do nothing good. We ain't got enough people to be fit.
If there's anything I've taken away from the meeting today, it's that, I know.
Commissioner Bolden, we had a conversation about people and the pharmacy issue. And as she said, we think we've taken care of all that. So it won't happen with current employees or dependents. Again, new employees will have to go through the process. But they should be told ahead of time, this is what we're gonna have to do, get to the providers. And we have an override situation so that you don't have to come up with five hundred dollars to pay for the medicine. We can go to the override policy and say, all right, while the provider's getting the information to us, here, we'll take, take care of it for you. Now, are you hearing a whole bunch of people having pharmacy issues in the last three or four months?
No, and probably about the last, it started dwindling down, probably last month. About the last month and a half, it's dwindled down a lot. And I was thinking it was probably maybe four or five people. And one of the people that was very vocal to me about it, they're happy right now. And they, and like I say, I was still, I, I was still unhappy as, as of last week. But they have been in contact with me and worked some things out and, so.
I had to argue for you while you was gone.
She did.
Thank you, thank you.
She, she put up a good fight.
Okay, we all square, everybody, basically. You all owe us, oh, Commissioner Flowers-Taylor, information from the last couple of years to be able to do this. Your budget is gonna be based off of, right now, the seven point whatever, three percent reduction.
That's correct.
If that changes, then the budget will change that we've all looked at to be able to do this.
So, one more question. We talked a little bit when we first started talking to, to Miles about this. We talked about weight loss medication.
She, she hit that earlier.
And she covered that at the beginning, please go, go back through that again.
Yeah, like the first couple of slides.
Okay. So the pharmacy slide here on slide four. So if you look at the navy blue bars, that is actually your prior pharmacy claims in twenty-two, twenty-three compared to twenty-three, twenty-four.
Wow.
Right.
And the weight loss med, if you read the stuff at the bottom.
And so currently, there are sixteen members, so diabetes drugs today, many drugs in which people are using for weight loss purposes. So they are not covered without a diabetes diagnosis. So we did talk with the team here and look to see, okay, if we opened it up and allowed all these, you know, diabetes medications to be used for weight loss purposes, what would that cost ramification have on the plan? So there are currently sixteen members who were denied for diabetes drugs for weight loss purposes because they didn't have a diabetes diagnosis. And the cost impact for covering weight loss meds with no requirements for just those sixteen people would be two hundred and thirty thousand, when in reality, there would be a lot more who were wanting to take those medications. So for just those sixteen people who wanted to take the drugs without a diabetes diagnosis, if we covered those drugs for weight loss purposes, it would be two hundred and thirty thousand.
So, do we have people who have a diabetes diagnosis that are on that medication? That are on weight loss medication? So, so this is my concern as a medical person. Diabetes isn't the only reason that people are overweight.
Sure.
Overweight causes peripheral artery disease, high cholesterol, hypertension. It is not, losing weight does not just affect your blood sugar. So I don't know how come we're picking a thing and saying that's the reason you can lose weight. Because if someone's cholesterol is two hundred and fifty, it's gonna go down if they lose weight. So why would we not want to promote that? Because high cholesterol leads to kidney disease, high blood pressure leads to kidney disease. While it may cost us two hundred thousand dollars to provide that medicine, if they have to go on dialysis, it's gonna cost us a hell of a lot more money. If they have a stroke because they have high blood pressure and high cholesterol, it's gonna cost a lot more money than two hundred and thirty. They may actually stay working for us longer if they are not subject to that. So I, I have a real problem with someone arbitrarily picking diabetes. Now, semaglutide or some of the other names or whatever, I get it. I know people are using it as a weight loss medicine. And I think one of the reasons that maybe some people with a diabetes diagnosis couldn't get it is because if you could pay for it in cash, the people who were getting it by insurance couldn't get it. But I'm just not understanding why it, that thing is carved out. Because everybody who is overweight is not diabetic. So does that mean they shouldn't be able to lose weight? If they're, they're morbidly obese, if you're ninety pounds over your normal weight, you're morbidly obese. That's half for us.
The, one consideration here could be that you cover FDA-approved weight, weight loss medications. That is not your Ozempic, that is not your Manjaro, those are not approved for weight loss. People take them for weight loss all day long and see great results, but they are not FDA-approved and certainly not something that we would recommend the county do. But what you could potentially consider is covering FDA-approved weight loss medications. And you could even put a requirement within it where these employees are having to meet a certain, certain requirements for, you know, BMI, if their BMI is at a certain level, you know, a number of other categories.
And I say that because I know one lady in particular who worked at nine-one-one had been coming to us for almost ten years, asking to have a procedure done. And, you know, we, we wouldn't even give them, we didn't even allow them to have weight loss medicine. So I think she had to physically pay out of her pocket to have that. She's lost about a hundred pounds and her medication cost has gone down. But why would she have to do that when it is clearly a medical problem? So I don't think that we're sitting here saying, everybody needs semaglutide. I think we're saying people need the ability to get treated for weight loss with weight loss medicines if they have a weight loss problem. And then that's up to a physician to figure out whether it's not based on the BMI or if they have other comorbidities.
I, I think we would be in great shape if we would do exactly what Ashley just indicated, which is afford our employees a weight loss program through a protocol of FDA-approved weight loss medication. If we could do that, we could, we could better afford the opportunity for our employees to take advantage of those types of opportunities.
And, and.
Would the board afford us the opportunity to go grab that information?
Sure, but I'm, I'm gonna make a point here. I think everybody has to have a stake in the game, okay? So we're talking about, we were talking about rewards earlier today. There, there needs to be something that actually coincides with that to say, okay, if we do this, which I think we should, there's gotta be a stake in the game that you're willing to do also, to participate in any of the rewards that we have so that, you know, I'm, I'm all about shots or not, whatever we do, is still making yourself healthy. If we're offering these programs, you know, fit, whatever we're doing here with these, uh, fitness trackings and things like that, and we only have a, a small percentage of the people that are taking advantage of it, that number needs to increase. If you're gonna do that, we're gonna do it all.
We're, we're talking about HIPAA. You talk about two different things. It's one thing to say, I want to go online and say, I want to follow this, you know, counseling and whatever else. But, you know, if I go to my doctor and, and say that I'm overweight or he says you're overweight and you probably need to take something, that's nobody else's business but mine. That information is, is protected personal health information and cannot be shared on a platform such as that. So I'm not saying we shouldn't have health and wellness programs. But, you know, if I go to get a hysterectomy, that ain't nobody's business but mine. And if I go for weight loss, that's nobody else's business. So we know that obesity is a problem. We're willing to address everything else so far but this. So I think just addressing it in a way where someone's doctor can say, yes, you will be able to get the medicine you need and follow the regimen. I think if people are doing that and we can offer them some extra incentive, they can volunteer to come into the wellness program and we can figure out what those incentives are. But you can't cross the two of them, you can't connect their medical care with the wellness program because you violated their PHI. So, so I'm saying the same thing you're saying, but we can't require them because that means you'd have to find out they are getting weight loss medicine in order to do it.
Well, so as part of the follow-up information, not only the historical plan performance, but we can also confirm with Veracity if they can just give us a projected estimate for the cost of covering FDA-approved weight loss medications, which is going to be Wegovy, Saxenda and Zepbound. We can confirm what the cost ramifications for, you know, adding that coverage would be effective seven-one and as part of the follow-up items, we can get that over to you all for consideration.
So.
We need to hear that, we need to see that number.
Yeah, I, I, because I'm not the person that is saying that everybody who needs to lose weight needs to be on Wegovy or, or semaglutide. I'm, I'm not saying that. I think that there is something in that medicine that also does something to the pancreas so that if you're diabetic, and it can change your blood sugar level, your serum blood level. So I'm not saying that everybody should be on it. And, and I, and I appreciate the information because clearly some people will be able to get a note from their doctor saying, this is the medicine I want you to take because you're diabetic. But if you, just like me, and you need to stop eating and you can't button your pants up and you go to the doctor and say, I wanna lose weight, they have a formulary that says, this is what I need you to take and blah, 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 blah. And you come back like you do a regular doctor visit. That's what I'm saying, we've never even offered that.
Right, right.
So this might be the first time that we have this offer.
Yes, so we'll see what the cost is for that and go from there.
That's good, that's good, thank you.
Yes.
All right, now, let's make sure, everybody, does she have all the stuff everybody wants back?
I think she does.
She's gonna give us the information on the cost for the weight loss program and the comparison between twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three.
First claims being paid out.
To be able to do that. Anybody else got anything that they want her to provide back? This is great news and if we're gonna do it, this is a great time to pick some stuff up for our citizens, our, our employees, okay? All right, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, item number two. Review the MOU for Archway. I think we should've seen it all go through, everybody should have a brand-new copy. It was being passed out. Are there any fundamental changes? MOU for Archway.
There, there aren't any significant changes from, from year to year. So it's the same MOU that you've entered into with the same amount of money.
It's just either a pay-per-view or not, basically.
Yeah.
Correct.
No, this is just that we agree to pay.
Yeah, we're getting so much more than the twenty thousand that we pay for Archway out of them, like, so much more.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
We're getting so much more out of the Archway partnership than the twenty thousand that we're having to pay in.
Return on investment for what we're getting from the students is.
Absolutely.
Look, while we're, while we're talking about that, return on investment, and I think you're exactly right, but can we recap maybe over the last couple of years, not all the way back, unless it may be the last two to three years? What has the county benefited? What have we benefited from Archways, the county?
They did the study out at the landfill.
Okay.
For creating a park at the landfill.
Okay.
They did.
Cory's Edge. Cory's Edge.
Cory's Edge.
Recycle centers.
Okay.
They are, they are actually completing the recycle center material for our review. Friday was their last update, so you should have something presented to you by May the twentieth.
What is that a reference to?
Uh, it's for self-recycling. So they have constructed a self-recycling facility to go at two of our locations. They put a tremendous amount of work into that project. So more to come on the twentieth, I don't wanna take away from.
So that's gonna be a presentation that we're gonna have here.
That's gonna be a presentation.
Got it.
Intersections?
They, they have been a part of our intersection work. We've gotten quite a number of projects and I don't have them listed here in front of me.
Of recent, we have not. I think this past year, the actual dollar value of what we've gotten has been under two hundred thousand. But there's been some years where we were.
That's what's the last two, three years.
Over millions of dollars worth of.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
And they've also.
It was just two hundred, we're paying twenty.
And they've also done work for authorities that you appoint to, being the water authority, the development authority and the airport authority.
Their EPD, the professor over there, EPD program actually came with a large contingency group of students and walked through Cory's Edge just in the last month and done a tremendous amount of work for the cleanup for that, that project. I've actually seen them do probably right at two hundred, maybe a little bit more, two hundred thousand dollars worth of work just in this year.
I, I just needed to have that out there.
Something that they haven't done this year, but that has benefited the county for multiple years since they did it, was the revamp of the Griffin-Spalding leadership class that they did for the Chamber of Commerce, which county, city, employees go through every single year. In fact, there were, I think Kevin's still in the room, he's in, he's in this year's class, as is Terry with the fire department.
Okay, I, I, no problem about the return on investment. What I have a problem with is how Archway works.
Right.
I have a problem with it because there are only a handful of people that really know what's going on with Archway. We don't have an Archway professional who is a part of this community. You know, maybe I'm living in another world from Angel and Kristen, but that is, that is the level of service that they provided us. So my question is, does it take more money for us to be able to get an Archway professional here? Because, yeah, we've been paying the same sixty thousand dollars, but also what you're being, what we've been getting from our Archway professional is basically, I can hook you up to this person, but not really community involvement. The other problem I have with this is that there are multiple members on the Archway executive board. If I had to give them a grade today on what, what we've done the last three years, and I'm F because we have not had a community project. Yes, there's been these errant whatever else, but, you know, the development authority, the housing authority, the city, the county, the chamber, everybody who was at the table, we're, we're not involved, we're not involved with, with that. So, so then my other rub is that there are only three partners, three sponsors who pay for this. It is not our responsibility to make sure that every organization who is using these services has this available to them at our cost.
No, that's, that's a good point because the airport authority and other authorities do reach out and have them. May, maybe we say, not just, hey, these three, but like, let's expand it to these other groups as well, maybe.
Well, I can tell you, we've talked about this, that, that, that you really shouldn't be at the executive table raising your hand to make a decision for the county when, when you don't have any skin in the game.
So let's talk about that, I, I'm not on that board anymore, okay?
But, but nobody actually raises their hand. There, there are no votes within the executive committee.
But I understand that, but Stephanie, when we had our last retreat or whenever it was in Macon, the, what was brought to us as the plan for citizen schools and what was gonna go for was brought to us by the executive committee and said, we were told, this is what we're gonna work on.
But those organizations, as, as I was saying, you know, have a stake, I think, in the community. I mean, I think that's why they were handpicked originally to be, be part of Archways, if I'm not mistaken, executive. You know, not just the, the count, the, the governments, but we had, there was, the groups were chosen because, you know, they have an influence in the community, you know, they, they, there is a stake. you know, they have an influence in the community. You know, they they, there is a stake. That's my understanding of how that was actually constructed in the first place.
That is that is how the uh executive committee was originally structured. Y'all know, I haven't been a part of it for a couple of years, but um the the cha- any changes that have been made to that executive committee were basically made within the executive committee itself.
And that I don't know if it was.
And and the la- I I mean, I agree, the last big thing was the um community needs assessment and.
Nothing's been done.
I'm part of the housing and housing work group. We didn't meet forever in a day, but they have ju- the Archway professional has just now begun to reconvene that. So I think there's.
The big thing was the charity trackers and all those kind of things. I think they made some made some progress with as far as those committees and the communication and how we actually changed the logo. I think back when, you could see the impact of what's what was being done when we were trying to collaborate, particularly with the city and county and school board. As I look at Ryan's shirt there, Ryan's shirt there, their logo was was actually derived out of Archways.
Right, the rebranding was our first big project.
That was part of the public image work, issue work.
Throughout.
That's been a while.
Everybody's doing Espalding, and you're absolutely right.
That was a while.
And so I feel like I'm I'm totally disconnected from them because I don't have anything that I'm supposed to be doing as a commissioner or we don't really have anything as a board that we're doing. So I don't like the idea that someone decides, some group of people decides that this is the way we're gonna go and I tell you that we're gonna do it and nobody's doing it. I mean, that's that's where I am. So I don't know that the answer is not letting everybody vote, but 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 if the water authority uses Archway and the development authority uses Archway, they got their money. Let them help pay for us to do that. And if it means that we need a an Archway professional in the community, I guess they're here, I guess our professional is here like five days a week.
She has an office at the U G A Griffin campus now. I was told by um David Button.
She does, she does.
Okay. Yeah, it it basically it started out, we we provided an office for her or the city so that you were here where we were.
I I believe she got booted from the office at the, in the City of Griffin building. They needed it for paying customers.
So so this, I'm not saying let's don't spend the money. You can't you can't beat the return on investment. But if we want to do some work and we want to get some stuff done, something has to change about how the decision-making process is going.
And and I I think that the probably the worst thing that could have happened was the cancellation of your intergovernmental retreat because I, these are the kinds of things that needed to be discussed prior to the repräsentation of an MOU, in my opinion. Um.
That's what that was, that was a drop off.
And Shenisa has put that back out for September. Uh, if you would, please take a look at the doodle poll that went out.
But but understand, it's March, it's April, it's May.
It's May.
Okay, the retreat was in January. So when we get to talk again, it's the end of the year. So where we are, where were we then, four years into not doing a doggone thing? I'm just saying. I don't really know what, this paper says that there's a lot of stuff that we're supposed to do and they're supposed to do.
I I will say that in years past, we did discuss the the um using additional funding partners and reaching out to additional funding partners. And I had suggested that the last couple of years that I was co-chair of the executive committee and the general consensus of the three governing bodies at that time was, no, we'll just pay it. It's only twenty thousand dollars. It's okay.
I I will give my chair kudos because sitting in the room last Wednesday, he said, we're ready for partners to step up financially and begin paying their share. Uh, and there were a number of other um organizations sitting in the room and he pushed real hard for others to step up with a checkbook.
Other communities um use Georgia Power, Central Georgia EMC, hospital systems.
People at the table and they just kind of have fallen off.
Yep.
Um, I, one other thing about about the chairman um talking about that. One of the ladies that is on the Park and Rec Leisure Services Committee was in one of these leadership classes and they wanted to go out and re-flower that area of nineteen and forty-one where the U G A red thing is, but because all the trees and stuff that came down in tornado, they wanted to go out and put a garden out there. Well, they didn't have any money. They were in the leadership class. And if somebody else was paying besides us, there would be more money than the twenty thou- the twenty thousand dollars we paid to U G A partnership. So that that's the other part of this. We ask people to go to these classes, come up with a project, and then they gotta try to figure out how to get the money to make the dog park or to make a walk or to make a a a small little library.
So so the community contribution is never going to be more than that sixty thousand dollars that's required unless um Athens decides that it needs to go up. So so you're just, i- if if you get additional partners, you're just gonna be paying less than twenty thousand dollars for it.
And that's fine.
Um, there there won't be additional money for leadership projects.
Three thousand dollars to buy flowers so that we can make a bee garden. It's easier for us to say, okay, we only paid ten thousand dollars for our partnership, so we can probably help y'all do that or whatever. But but I'm just, I I'm just very disappointed in the performance that has come out of that committee. Like I said, I don't mind spending the money, but we we, I just don't like to be, have stuff and you don't do anything.
And I I think honestly that you need to, you need to be hearing from the Archway professional on a much more regular basis than you do. And not just an introduction, but an actual presentation as to what they're currently doing.
Well, I know that she, when, I think she was actually here a couple of months ago, and maybe she wasn't on the agenda. I think she thought she was gonna speak. I um, I don't even think we even acknowledged her. I don't know, maybe because she wasn't. I think she, I don't know how she thought she was, but um, I I maybe I'm thinking, okay.
We met her. She was introduced at the collaborative, whatever the thing is that they do, partners, da-da-da-da. I don't know what it is.
But she was here particularly. She was here particularly at our R B O C meeting because I, we had a chamber meeting the next morning and she was there. And she was like, I was prepared to speak. And I thought, okay, you know, um, I don't even think she was even, I mean, not enough credit, I don't think she was even recognized. She was sitting back there and.
No, I think maybe Steve introduced her.
Did you recognize her? Okay, but I, you know, but I don't know. I mean, I don't know if, we need to bring her back here so she can speak.
We'll have her come and speak on a routine basis to tell us.
But I think we're all in agreement.
Oh, we just say, okay, we're just, you just want the acknowledgement that we're willing to put in the money. So you want to know. Okay. I I think we're all good with that, right? Twenty thousand dollars.
If we want to push on something specifically, I mean, we've got to stand up and say, look, we're willing to put up twenty thousand dollars if, if we're not willing to do that, then uh.
Yeah. But you know, there's a question there with Gwen. Okay, so if if we were to divide out that twenty thousand, let's say we got more pe- people in that want to put more money in. I'm just saying. So would that, I mean, does the city and county and the Board of Education have more to say because these other entities are not putting in? Because that's what I'm I'm getting at here, is if we do ask for them to contribute to it, does that take away the leverage that we have?
We don't have any leverage.
You you have more representation on the executive committee because
That's what I'm wondering.
because each of, each of the governments has two folks um represented on the executive committee.
And how many people on the executive committee?
How many now? I'm not, I'm not sure.
Than I got. So, so yeah.
Maybe ten total.
Any other organization just has one representative.
So you have all these people putting in money. I'm just saying. You know, I mean, at, you know, I don't know. I'm I'm thinking that way as well, so.
It's just about skin in the game. It's easy for you to come down and make an opinion about something that is no risk to you whatsoever.
It it is. Um, there's also a flip side of that, back to Commissioner Johnson's point. I- if we as a county have a project that we really want to push, it becomes a lot easier for us to say, no, we don't want to do that that the outside partners are saying, we want you to do and we'll put that project in front and send that up to the students for their consideration. So it does make it a lot easier for us to pull on students.
It it doesn't, it re- to me, it doesn't really matter because when T J decides that he wants to call Archway about something, he don't come and ask us. When somebody from the city wants them to do the study they did on the water, they're not running up to Jessica and saying, can we do that? Because they know that they can. So and and that's because it's a community, it's a co- community resource. But but I'm just saying, we've got all these things going on and we have these programs that are outliers, but they can't go anywhere because they're always stopped because there's no partner funding to help them to be able to do it. I mean, I'm just using my one example, but same thing with the dog park. How to put up emergency dog feeding stations. We've had several things that came out of these committees, but no money to help them move.
Those those leadership projects are amazing. Um, we should get them to come and present their projects to you just because they're so great.
Has happened and what either moved forward or if it was stopped, why was it stopped? Because we know a lot of times it's the money, but how can we get them moving forward? So.
And and Kevin can tell you that some, that all the projects do need some sort of financial support. They're out seeking sponsorships from from folks all the time to to get their projects moving.
Do the legwork for us and then we're not really able to help them financially because we haven't budgeted for that, so, yeah.
All right. Uh, this is a workshop. Where is everybody's head on Archway?
I like it. Green light for me.
I'm good with it.
All right.
But I hear what Gwen's saying though, but I'm I'm good with the funding piece.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, could we, could we do more? Could it be better? Yeah, but.
Or what you're talking about, like the the stakeholders, you know, having more, you know, I I get that. But as far as the funding, I'm I'm good with it.
What if you set it up so that the chair would take it back to Archway and say, we're willing to fund it uh as the three governments, but for the partners who are sitting at the table that aren't funding it, we we have an expectation of you to fund the extras. So uh the leadership programs that come up or the the
That's great.
the opportunity to put uh the the bee garden up at U G A. If those projects come available, then we expect, and then lay out what that expectation is. I think that would be a great way to push on our partners.
If you want people to stay engaged in the community, don't give them an assignment. Make them do all the work over five or six months and then it just sits there. They they never get recognition for all the hard work and training that they went through and then the project doesn't get completed.
It's a waste of time.
Yeah. I'm good with that.
Okay. All right. Uh, item number three. Now, uh, let's make sure we're watching time too. Don't forget we have a six o'clock meeting following this one. Discussion with the Water Authority regarding I G A. Uh, Dr. Ledbetter and General Manager, Joseph.
I'm actually gonna, uh, we we uh brought Kirby Glaze in with the Heck Walker Jordan uh law firm to uh answer any questions that you guys may have regarding the I G A.
Thank you, Joseph. Uh, would it be helpful for the board if I just kind of laid out a little history or do you?
Yes.
Uh, as I'm sure you're all aware, the authority, the was created in nineteen eighty-two. It is a legally autonomous entity. Uh, but in about nineteen ninety-five, uh, the uh Board of the Authority and the Board of Commissioners decided that uh it was more efficient if the county, in essence, provided the employees to operate the functions of the uh Water and Sewage uh Facilities Authority. And since that time, for almost thirty years now, uh, that's the way it has operated. Uh, over that period of time, the authority has grown and the services have grown. Uh, and the authority is looking for a way to transition from that to a truly independent uh autonomous legal entity without adversely impacting the current employees. Uh, so what we have prepared in conjunction with your general counsel uh is is what I would describe as a bridging document, uh, something that allow, would allow that to happen over time. Uh, the employees of the authority would still remain employ- excuse me, would remain employees of the county for benefit purposes, uh, the county being reimbursed by the authority for all the expenses associated with those employees, uh, as well as expenses related to uh their, the space that they occupy, utilities that they use. The county and the authority would arrive at a budget for that each year uh to be reimbursed. Uh, from a management standpoint, those employees would report to the general manager of the authority who would in turn report to the Board of the Authority. Over time, if the authority desires to take over any of those additional functions such as ultimately those employees being employed separately by the authority, they would present that in a plan to the Board of Commissioners and that would become part of that next year's budget. Now, that's a fairly long document, boiled down to a very simple explanation. And I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you as members of the Board may have.
I did not see that document in the work packet.
Because I'm, excuse me, because I was on the the Water Authority, I've seen that document, so I know what that looks like. I'm sorry. I assumed it was in the packet.
I did too because I sent the executive summary and the I G A.
Now, everybody needs to remember, there's two attorneys talking back and forth as you've got it. Uh, this is a kind of a conflict attorney to be able to set this out because uh Stephanie can't do both. She can't rep- normally she represents the Water Authority.
You can advise her.
She represents us and so she has to be pulled out to be able to do this and they had to get a separate attorney to be able to uh step this up. Uh, this is a huge step so everybody understands from where we were uh five years ago, eight years ago, thirty years ago because this is moving forward into a much more independent, trying to do something. We have all seen the stuff about sixteen and sewer. Uh, that's gonna be a big deal for us, the decision to move into sewer, which is not something that the Water Authority has been involved in. By the end of the year, we'll know if we're going to move into uh the sewer business. But this is trying to set up the rules on uh how independent and how much they can go and do in their own regard uh versus uh being with us a a hundred percent of the time. And there's some really flaky stuff that's been done for thirty years that just needed to be cleaned up.
I I do believe the I G A with the executive summary was sent to the Board on April the thirtieth from Chairman Davis.
Okay, I've read the document. I I didn't see it in the in the packet because I mean, the expectation is when you have it on the agenda, you have it in the packet.
Right. It it was not in the packet. Uh, please forgive me for that, but it was sent to um all of the commissioners on April the thirtieth.
So I I do have some comments.
Thank you.
Um, one, because I don't have the document, can we pull it up? Because I don't have the document, I saw something in the document that they, it said that the Water Authority employs, our Water Authority employs and report to the General Manager. Uh, but it also said that the Water Authority um employees would fall under the personnel policy and pay scale of Spalding County. And I don't think that the Water Authority agreed to that. I mean, I think that that the Water Authority operates that way, but if the Water Authority decides that their general manager's salary should be X Y Z or that their office manager's salary should be X Y Z, I don't think that those salaries should be affected by what it is that the county's pay scale is. Just like we don't, the county doesn't decide what David Lucky gets paid or what his secretary gets paid. So that I did see, um, when I see stuff like this, I'm gonna screenshot it myself.
Do you two attorneys agree that that's in there?
Well, it it was my intent, it was my understanding that the way that was drafted is that they would not fall under the pay scale. They would fall under the personnel policies for such things as uh leave time, sick leave, uh whatever other, dress codes, those things that may uh apply to any other personnel uh for the county, but not the pay scale.
And that's my understanding as well.
Well, so there are two, it's stated in the document twice in two different places and that's why it caught my attention because in one place it says one thing and then the other place it says something else. And because I'm just now looking at it, I can't tell, I could probably tell you tonight.
It it does, you're absolutely right. It does say that they will be under the management of the General Manager. Their duties will be determined and and they will report to the General Manager. It does also say that they will be treated as employees of the county for personnel, for purposes of personnel policies.
Right. Okay, so I I just, I'll have to go back and 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 when I can get to someplace I can actually pull up and be able to tell you exactly. The other concern I had, and I brought this up with Steve, and this was before he got here. is that when the Spalding County signed and made an agreement with the City of Griffin, when we decided that the airport was going out in, in East Griffin, and I'm not sure, but I believe that the Board of Commissioners gave away service area. There was an agreement that the city would be able to have, that would be annexed into it, but the service area really wasn't, Spalding County's to give away.
So Spalding County does own, the City of Griffin owns some property that is adjacent to the airport? If that's what you're talking about in Spalding?
No, the, the, the property, there, there's property, the, the property where the airport is is annexed. And then there are properties that are leading to that that were also annexed, that are connected to it, contiguous to it.
I think it's the plan to annex. I don't think they actually have been annexed as of now.
But part of the discussion was, because the way we were talking about it was that, why, we were saying at first we weren't going to let them annex. And the question was, why would we not let them do that? We don't provide utilities, blah, blah, blah. And so the agreement would be that when they annex, they would provide the utility. But the water service, we didn't have a right to be able to give them that. That was never brought to the Water Authority. So before we get this agreement changed, I feel like there needs to be some clarification. Because part of the problems that we've had in the past when the county was running things is that we were giving up service areas that we did not have the authority to give up. You're, you're staring at me and.
Are you referring to the sewer delivery area that was kind of carved out for the airport? That fell outside the City of Griffin? Yes, that was part of the deal.
Right, but the county made that deal.
Correct.
The Water Authority didn't have any say-so in that. And so I.
And we can't speak for another authority, so.
But since nineteen ninety-five, you have spoken as if you were the Water Authority on many, many, many occasions.
So I would like for that to be cleared up in the agreement. I didn't see in there anywhere where it said that, that at no time Spalding County can give somebody else our certain.
When was that agreement made?
And, and, well, in nineteen ninety-five was the, the time when the, the Board of Commissioners basically took over the operation of the Water Authority. But the airport agreement was made in two thousand and five, I think.
No, girl, I wasn't here that long. I wouldn't even hear then. It was, I want to say like twelve, twenty, twelve.
Still more than ten years.
It, um, because when they, when did they start working on the airport? But whenever it was, the Water Authority was still a functioning authority, had not fully taken back over. But the county gave away that service area for water without the Water Authority saying it was okay to do that, is what I'm saying. So, so.
And, and one of the things that this is intended to do, and Joe can, Joseph can speak to this better than I, but one of the things that the Water Authority is in the process of doing is trying to identify some of those contractual relationships that were created by the county or with the county with other entities that in fact should have actually been created with the authority. So that going forward, that doesn't keep happening again.
So, yeah, we, we know that the airport is coming. We hope that the airport is coming.
It's coming.
And so.
It is coming.
Knowing, knowing that that's going to happen, I think it's important that this piece, whether the water, the Water Authority says, okay, you know, you're going to provide sewer. You can't really do that without water and we give you permission to do it. But it shouldn't happen without the Water Authority saying that it can happen.
So the intent of this IGA was to basically come to an agreement with how the Water Authority structure is set up and how we, we function inside Spalding County. The memorandum of understanding, that's part of the steering committee, is actually going to address the things that you're referring to, where it's the service area, it's, it's how do we handle the, the on-fence properties, stuff like that.
Okay.
With Butts County.
And, and just for the, just for clarification, as far as the airport authority goes, that is probably part of the memorandum of understanding with the sponsors, which involves GDOT, FAA, Spalding County, the City of Griffin, and the authority. And the, the Water Authority would not be an airport sponsor in any way that I could possibly think of.
No, that's under the new agreement.
There isn't.
Under the previous agreement that the city and the county made, the airport authority.
It's the, it's under the old agreement as well. I, I've unfortunately had to study them all, so.
Okay, so what I need from you all is, everybody, we're going to vote on this. This is a big step. I want to make sure everybody takes the time, skim through it, read through it, get your comments ready to go, so that when we get ready to vote on it, we're all in agreement. This can't, you know, take your time to read through it. Sorry, we didn't get it to you in the packet. But everybody should have had it, read through it. The two attorneys are willing to work out the wording to add stuff in there if we need to do that.
So do we need to amend the agenda to put it on here tonight or just agenda for tonight?
Tonight?
Am I missing it?
Not tonight.
Okay, so it's not going to be on here tonight, okay.
No, we're not.
So we still have time to chew into it.
Okay.
Correct. The reason that we're doing it, the workshop, is to make sure
That we have.
All that stuff that we're talking about, that the, we have not got that to the attorneys before, so this is the time we do it. So please read through it. It is a big deal. It is a big deal that will cause us problems in the future and we look back and say, oh, that's, then it should have been, I wish I had, so, all right.
So, but Stephanie, you're saying that that concern will happen further down the road after this initial agreement?
That's correct.
That just says we've, you, the county recognized.
These are your responsibilities, these are ours.
This is intended just to define that relationship between the county and the authority.
Okay, all right.
And, and certainly if I can answer any further questions as y'all go forward, I'll be more than happy to come and do that.
Super.
You have my confidence.
Okay.
We all square? Work it. Get your comments back into Steve.
Okay.
And we'll take it from there. And probably the next time, the next DOC in May, we'll be bringing it up to vote if everybody's ready to go. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chairman Cannon, you okay with all that?
I didn't have to get up and sign nothing, so I'm good.
Okay. Item number four. Board of Commissioner mid-year retreat. Originally, we're going to have one on.
Ten May.
And on ten May. We're pushing that on forward to do it. How, how soon does everybody feel we've got to do this? If there is an immediate issue that we need to do it, then we need to know that. My original intent was, of course, ten May. My next of time that I really wanted to do is, is get it to, get us together right before the millage rate, somewhere in August, September timeframe, so that we have an opportunity to kind of get it all out on the table and do the team building we need to do to be able to understand. Now, if anybody thinks that they need one, us to get together for a mini-retreat in the next month, now's the time.
Okay, so I, I was trying to be diplomatic and I'm, I'm not, since you have talked, let us talk about this now. The last retreat that we had, at the end of that retreat, all the air had been sucked out of the room, as far as I'm concerned. I don't think that that's the way that was supposed to end. We, we left that retreat with a bunch of unfinished, raw feelings and not really understanding. I, I felt like once the air got sucked out of the room, we didn't really say, this is where we're going to be next steps, next, next steps. I think the idea of doing it after we pass the budget, because we still, we'll be passing the budget based on at millage rate. I mean, but we still won't know what that will be until later. But I think, based on what we did in January of the first meeting, we need to be able to say, okay, this is what we said we were going to do. Did we do it? If we didn't do it, why didn't we do it? Because we don't have any measurement of where it is that we said we wanted to go and where we are.
Okay, I jumped in for a second. I guess a good example of that would be the videos. What happened to the videos? I mean, that was one of the things, I mean, I didn't mind. I think James did his, I mean, I'm trying to think, but we, not to say, I'm just saying, you know, that was one of the tasks that we were given.
Right, and, and, and it just kind of dropped.
Ryan's next.
So, so that's why I'm saying I think that it's important to do it because we started this out to figure out how we could help track ourselves. And then we got kind of sideswiped because we all got in our feelings and we didn't get anything really done for the last one. And that was why, I mean, I know that the tenth was a bad day, but I feel like if we get the budget voted on, then after July, we should be able to go back and measure some stuff. We don't know where the millage rate will be yet, but we will have gotten that part done. And I mean, you know.
That's not, that's not a bad idea, like, doing it at the halfway mark to sort of.
Right, because we will be able to come back and say, did we get their, the people there, their raise?
Because the intention here.
Did we hire the people?
Yeah, how was code enforcement, how was that a control?
An animal control person, we got that person?
So, yeah, I mean, I.
All right, so we're talking about late July?
Anytime after, well, look at everybody's vacation, because you know, that's summer vacation.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to have to do it. Ready to go. Because we also have to get the facilitators on their calendar too.
After summer.
So, what time, what basic time frame?
When ki, when do kids go back to school?
End of August, first of September.
So, so maybe around.
First of August.
August, I'm like, when, when that vacation time is over, that people can actually be here. I don't, wouldn't want to take, but I just think that, that, that'll give us some marching instructions to move forward and we can measure where we've been. Maybe a couple of us who are supposed to make a videotape might actually make it by then.
Okay, so August first to fifteenth time, basic timeframe to be able to do it. All right. I talked, I talked to Bill tomorrow, so everybody knows. And I'll, I'll push him into the August first to fifteenth timeframe for us to be able to go back and renew all of that stuff and.
And get them forward.
Kind of the plan of what we want to do again.
A follow-up from the January retreat.
Yes, all right. We square? All right. Let me write that down just a minute. First, so fifteen August, okay. Item number five, budget update from the county manager and the.
Director of Administration and Finance?
Yes.
Better title.
Please forgive me. If I don't carry any questions, we'd be able to.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to share with you all of the hard work that this team has put together over the last few weeks. You know, early, early on, we had the opportunity to sit down with the Board of Commissioners and have the discussion with you as a, as individual departments and share what our thoughts were with respect to the budget. That said, one of the things that we really wanted to highlight was how deep we cut our budget for this year. In, in fact, we cut very deep for this year and there was a reason for it. We wanted to make sure that we were being extraordinarily transparent with our community and highlighting to them what it costs for each of our departments to operate. We also came back to you and shared with you supplemental budgets, those things that we thought we needed in order to carry on a higher level of service to raise the bar for how we've provided services back to our community. That said, what you're seeing in front of you is our general fund budget. Our general fund budget from last year fiscal year twenty-four was sixty-seven million, two hundred and five oh fifty-six. And the proposed budget that we are sharing with you this evening is seventy thousand, one twenty-eight, six fifty-six. This also includes the decompression raises that we've talked about that this board voted on just a few weeks ago. So let me share with you just a little bit more.
And, and the extra M and O from the pool too, right?
That's correct. It does carry the extra M and O. In fact, if you look, the differences in this year's budget compared to fiscal year twenty-four, the expenditure side has increased over last year by two million, nine hundred, twenty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. A few of the key areas have changed that are listed in this following table. Our workers' comp increased forty-six point six percent. The law library, the funding went up just a bit there, thirty-three percent. Our gasoline cost went up twenty-six point four percent this year. Electricity, sixteen point seven. Vehicle insurance increased sixteen percent. You can, you can continue down the list, but I do want to highlight two areas there at the bottom. The Aquatic Center with the one point zero eight one million dollar budget was not in last year's budget. In Sunnyside, the, the M and O to take care of Sunnyside because we picked up the requirements for maintaining the City Hall Community Center that's located inside of Sunnyside and we've placed a hundred thousand dollars into the budget there.
And that's just sort of a raw estimate, right?
This is a raw estimate based on the information that we were given from the utilities that we had from the previous year, along with the rental and the upkeep of the facility. We projected it will cost us the hundred thousand dollars in order to satisfy that requirement. Some of the things that you don't see here that we have not removed from the budget include the road, the million dollars for the roads, the hundred thousand dollars for the Commissioners Contingency Fund. Those have not been removed. Those are inside of the budget for this year.
Wow, okay.
Go back, please, just a second. So when we're talking about Sunnyside, this one hundred thousand dollars, does that, does that include road, road improvement, grass cutting, basic maintenance repairs to, what, water line?
We were already providing all that, though, right? We, we were providing, well, we don't, we don't provide the water line maintenance.
Well, yeah.
That takes the Water Authority's responsibility. But as far as the grass cutting is concerned, there were funds left over from Sploes for city side, for Sunnyside, rather, that are designated specifically for taking care of the roads inside of Sunnyside. One of the things that we are actually looking into for the dirt road that's inside of Sunnyside is doing chip and seal for the portion of that area. That will be something that we will take a look at now that that area is a part of the unincorporated Spalding County. The hundred thousand dollars that you have listed here is solely for the maintenance and upkeep of the, the Sunnyside City Hall Community Building.
So, then these numbers really should be different because you, you know you're going to be doing road maintenance and grass cutting. And you said that there was a hundred, there was money set aside for, from Sploes. How much was that? That was no more than two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars?
It, it's, they have used a considerable amount of that. I believe the last number that I saw is a little less than thirty thousand for what's remaining in the Sploes funds.
Okay, and you're going to use, your plan is to use that for what?
They had designated it for road improvement. That's what they had designated that portion of the money for.
Do we have any roads that are in Sunnyside that are listed on our T-Sploes list? Okay.
So hold that thought. Anticipated revenue should the Board of Commissioners maintain the fiscal twenty-four millage rate of fifteen point five eight eight would result in an estimated, and it is solely estimated at this point because we do not have the Board of Assessors information or the Tax Assessors information. We have had many conversations with them. They have shared with us what we could expect as an estimate. But the estimated increase would be three point two million dollars for maintaining the same millage rate. Maintaining the same funds would provide us with a balanced budget for fiscal year twenty-five. One of the things that we have discussed, in, in fact, we discussed it with you during our department budgets, was rolling the fiscal year twenty-four monies from the approximately ninety-one people that were not filled, the positions that were not filled. That is an estimated three point five million dollars worth of funding that is still sitting in the budget. Additionally, staff requests that the savings from the non-filled positions be allocated to the critical areas that would afford us the opportunity to invest in the infrastructure, public services, and other community benefits such as our capital improvement areas, the projects that we have listed for fiscal year twenty-five. Now then, this is small. I know it's small. There's a reason why it's small. Our staff has rank ordered all of the supplements that we listed for you during our budget reviews. It is my intent to send this out to you first thing in the morning with our, our rankings, but this is where we are going to ask specifically for your rankings on how we list these supplemental budgets into our fiscal year twenty-five budget. That said, out of the seventy-five. That said, out of the seventy-five supplemental items listed, we do have the funding if we roll the fiscal year twenty-four monies into fiscal year twenty-five to satisfy all three point seven million dollars for the supplemental request. We have a balanced budget.
Steve, Steve's a miracle worker.
We will be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, yeah, because that picture was so fast, I didn't really get a chance to look at it. So I really don't have any questions. So it's the first time I've seen it.
It is the first time. Uh, we have just completed, in fact, we just completed the analysis of all of the budget this afternoon.
So, this is my concern that I quickly cannot see on there. We are planning to open the Aquatic Center. We don't have anything on here that talks about the transportation that we told voters we would provide so that people will be able to get from one recreation center, from all recreation centers to the Aquatic Center. So, yeah.
And a- as we have discussed with Three Rivers on multiple.
No, I'm not talking about Three Rivers. Part of this is understanding that we would be creating our own fixed route. That, that was the conversation. This is not about Three Rivers funding it. Um, I went back and looked at the transportation study and it said that, you know, as far as us providing a fixed route throughout the county, it was not recommended. But that we would, we, it might make sense for us to establish a fixed route, which we were saying that we were going to do in order to provide transportation to people at the rec center. And I say this because the multitude of people who are still coming to this meeting and still coming to the City of Griffin meeting, saying that the Aquatic Center was built out in the industrial park so that certain people could not get there and use the facility, has not gone away. So if we're planning to open those doors and we're not going to provide transportation, I'm going to have a lot of heartburn with that. And I need to see that there's something in this budget that is going to do that. I mean.
Now, there's a number of items that, you know, I think the county manager has put everything in there. We talked about a number of items. Uh, we talked about, uh, community development. We talked about grant writer. There's a number of items in here that we said, hey, we want to take a look at. But we all kind of looked and said, see where we are first with, uh, Steve pulling it all together and saying, okay. Uh, what about the supplementals? It appears that he can take care of the supplementals. What about the, uh, decompression? He can take care of that now. So, uh, once we get where we stand, then we can come and say, all right, we've got two or three other things we want you to look at to be able to do that. One. Two, uh, Commissioner Flowers Taylor, I didn't understand what you were talking about, I guess, on the direct, uh, bus. When you said transportation, I was thinking we were talking about, uh, Three Rivers.
Yeah.
Bus route and just talking them into or supplementing them to be able to do it. So I didn't understand quite what you were saying. So that's a good point for us to be able to talk through. We've got to get this stuff with Steve.
Partnership of the Board of Education also to get them, didn't we mention that?
Yeah, asked if we did help.
With, with the transportation piece, I missed it during the bunch.
But, but we were also very clear that Spalding County doesn't want to get into the transportation business.
No, I don't think we were very clear about that because we were looking, well, you may have been, but we were looking at in our transportation study, which is our comprehensive plan for the next ten years or twenty years, at whether or not, what is the feasibility for having fixed routes? Because we talked about people not being able to get to the industrial park, getting from one inner town to the other. And that's what the study covered, getting from Sun City out to the hospital. And based on what they were saying, we don't have the population.
That's right.
For that route. But what we told people when we made the decision to put the park, the Aquatic Center, out away from the majority of the population, which at least thirty percent of our population are walking people, that we agreed that we would create a recreation bus route that would go from Fairmont to Wyomatais Park, to the City Park, to, what, Orchard Hill Park, to Ambus. And that would make a round that went, ended up at the Aquatic Center. And that would be the way that not only children, but seniors and anyone else who doesn't drive or doesn't have transportation, has a way to get to that facility. Um, and that is what, what I'm talking about because Three Rivers bought five new buses. And we have the ability to be able to access those. So the cost to us would be providing a driver, providing insurance, and providing a standard, standard route. I have mentioned this on multiple occasions. I cannot tell you how often people say to me, y'all don't want black people and poor people to come out there. I'm just being real. I'm just being real. This is what people say to me about the fact that the Aquatic Center is so far away from the general population. I want to go on record as saying that I have constantly said to this board and reminded this board as we have talked through opening an aquatic center that we didn't say we had enough money to operate, that that center does not eat, need to open with half of what we promised people for. That, that's, that's, that's what I, I want to say to y'all. Um, this is, I have said it. I haven't let it go. Every time we've said something about the Aquatic Center, this is what I have said. Where's the bus, where's the money for the bus driver? Where's the insurance for the bus driver? Are we going to get one buses? Are we going to get two? I think Gina Brantley came here and said she'd order five new buses, but only two of them are here. We made it clear to her then, we were going to need buses to be able to do that. So, um, you know, this is not just for poor people. This is for anybody who wants to have access and cannot drive or we don't have bus. The other part of that is if, as a county, we create a fixed route, even if it is to the rec center, that automatically opens the door up for us for fixed route money. Which means it'll, it'll make, well, we won't need bus stops because the stops would be at all of our rec centers. Um, but it opens the door for paying for the fixed route out of Three Rivers. If the fixed route is established, just like the impact fees. If you have something established, you can expand the service and then have it paid for out of impact. So, so like I said, I don't, I don't see, I do see the grant manager on here and I, and I agree with that.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I would like.
This is our opportunity. Steve's giving it to us.
Some more time to look at it and, and see what our priorities are.
But, but everything on this page is approved. Wow. My, my only question is, you said this is in rank order. There's only two things on here that are marked must haves. And they're seventy-three and seventy-five.
Where, where, what number is it?
Seventy-three and seventy-five. It's the, the two rolloff trucks for Solid Waste.
That's if, um, if the Board of Commissioners makes the decision that we're going to maintain our recycle centers, those are absolutely.
No one's talking about closing the recycling centers. No one is talking about closing the recycling centers.
I am.
I have not mentioned this.
I, I, I'm talking about that because it's one point three million dollars.
Direct all emails to Gwen.
That's almost two million dollars.
That's correct. It is one point nine two million dollars for maintaining the recycle centers for fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay. Take the, he's giving us, it, the staff's prioritization.
Mm-hmm. And he's going to email this to us.
At this point, he's got the money. He's worked the money out to be able to do this. Anything beyond this, we have got to do carve-out. We're going to eliminate this to do this. This is more important to us to be able to do that. So if you want something and you decide it's going to be item number seven, know that, uh, item number seventy-five or whatever is going to drop off.
Wait, I thought we had the money to do all of it, didn't?
All of it, if we have something new. This is an addition too. If you look through here and you say, I need, I want, uh, X, then prioritize where it is. Uh, let us all know about it and we'll start talking about, uh, you know. If you say it's number twenty-two in your mind, then that means whatever amount of money you put in there, it just backs back up.
And, and to really determine, and I'm just going to say it, if all these seventy-five items are considered priority anyway. I mean, you know, that's another thing. I mean, we all have priorities. I'm just saying, the staff, no, hear me out here. I mean, we would like to do everything for everybody, but we have to look to see, are all of these items a priority today?
That's correct.
So, you know, it's another thing. So.
Yes, I, I, great point, great point.
Just because it's there, don't mean it is.
You, everybody understands. This is, this is a hard drill.
Sure.
That, uh, everybody needs to take the time to go through and look and see. And then share it with each other so that we understand and say, oh, we don't agree with what you're putting in there. Or yes, we agree and we think it should be higher or lower or whatever. Or these three items, we don't think are must-dos. Uh.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, all right. Anything else on this, uh, county commissioner?
I'm not a commissioner.
Manager.
Okay. All right. Uh, thank you for stirring that up. Uh, next is the, uh, pay study update. Uh, I'd like to make sure that in my opinion, at least, uh, there's a difference between what we're doing with the pay study update, which is really compression and raises.
Right.
People who say we're giving raises to the tune of three point five million dollars, that's a different issue.
Yeah.
So, everybody needs to understand, uh, this is a compression issue. I believe there will, may be some people who do not get money in the compression issue.
Like, like new hires and stuff?
No, people that already work here who are already in the, within the range.
If they were in the range beforehand, a raise would say everybody gets two point one percent and everybody gets it. There will be people.
This is not an across-the-board eight percent raise or something.
That's correct.
So, uh, it's about decompression, compression, pay business here to be able to take care of what we need to do. So I want to make sure everybody doesn't get off track and start talking. It's easy to say pay raise. Uh, I think the words we've got to use or continue to be, uh, pay study because it's a different issue for us. Okay?
And I think it's. The pay study is done already. So how, you can't refer to it as a pay.
Well, and the most important thing.
The recommendations from the pay study.
The most important thing is that the people that are going to be receiving these, they understand. And they don't come in with an expectation or anticipation.
The way that I was going to raise.
You know, I mean, that's, that's the truth. I think it needs to be communicated to them.
Mm-hmm.
And one other thing I'll mention now, I'm sticking it out there. Uh, one of the ways I talk to folks about this is we have a letter of, a level of, uh, services that we want to provide. In a number of cases, we're not providing those services. Why aren't we providing those services, the levels we used to do that? Because we're losing folks. The reason we're losing folks is.
We're not paying for it.
Pay, uh, in some cases. We're fixing the pay, which will then fix the number of people, which will then fix the service level to what our citizens should be asking for, what we want to provide to the citizens. So everybody needs to understand, this is about, in the end, level of services and taking care, and the way we take care of the level of services is taking care of our people. And the way we take care of our people is through the three point five million dollars to be able to do the compression. So.
So, so I have a question. And, um, everything that, that we've done in terms of the compression and in the budget, we are still budgeted for those unfilled positions for the next year in the budget summary that you gave us.
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Now we'll go back to your update.
Okay. Thank you. I, I do want to highlight exactly what you guys were just discussing because I went back to the Evergreen Solutions slide deck and I wanted to pull some information. So the key study considerations, no employees are recommended for a salary decrease as a result of the study that was completed. Parity recommendations bring all employees to a market competitive position and reduces wage compression on the basis of experience and tenure at the time of implementation. And back to the chair's comment, that's exactly what we intended to do, was decompress the organization. What I heard from the board was, um, loyalty needs to be rewarded. Because we've got employees who have been here for twenty-five and thirty years who were still in their first level of pay. They were making roughly the same amount of money as those who were coming in at the same level. And that was, that was a challenge.
That's true.
Um, that was a challenge for services because people were working at the level of pay. And what I mean by that is they were working at the first level and not at the level that, uh, they should have been working with the experience level that they created. And I think it jumped ahead. The recommendation for cost was, uh, voted on just a few weeks ago by the Board of Commissioners. And you decided to move forward with a hybrid parity for a cost of three point one nine two million dollars or a twelve point seven percent increase to the payroll. That does not imply that we're giving a twelve point seven percent raise. We are not. That's not the intent. The intent was to do exactly what the chair indicated, which was decompress the organization. There will be some individuals who will get a substantial raise because they have been here for twenty-five years and been in their role for a considerable amount of time. And there will be others who will get a smaller raise because it is bringing their pay to a competitive rate. There are eleven individuals who are not getting a raise. Back to Commissioner Flowers Taylor's comment, they are already in their, uh, their range, all the way at the top end of their range. And in some instances, they are beyond the top end of their range. So there are eleven out of six hundred and roughly ten employees who will not get a raise from this study. But they are not reduced in their pay. They're not taking a reduction in their pay. If you look in front of you, you will see the pay adjustments by department. We have aggregated those by department. The largest, uh, percentage is going to our first responders. And that includes our Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, and nine-one-one, um, uh, communicators. They are the ones who are bringing the, the pay up because that is the competitive rate that our Evergreen consultants brought to us and indicated that this was the requirement for, uh, for keeping those employees. But I want to pause right here for a minute because you will see a little bit of a discrepancy. Our numbers say three point one seven two and, uh, Evergreen's showed three point one nine two. We've had a couple of people who have retired in the last, uh, few months since their study was put in. And that ten thousand dollars is just a reduction in what they were making or would have made in the new study and what the, uh, the new incoming individual would be making moving forward. So we do not see this as a, uh, as a degradation to the numbers. It's just the way that the employee count moved as we walked the journey. One of the things that I do want to highlight is that the meetings with the department heads and employees will begin this week. Uh, Miles is sitting here behind me and he will begin the, the discussions with our department heads tomorrow. Uh, and we'll continue through the end of the week so our employees will know fairly soon what their, uh, what their rate of pay is going to be. And we will move this forward in accordance with the vote that you gave us just a few weeks ago. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
I do have a question. Go back.
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking at the very last entry for code enforcement. One thirty-nine, fifty-two is the number for what?
One thirty-nine, three fifty-two was fiscal year twenty-four salaries that were allocated. And one fifty-four, four oh four are the new salaries that are allocated for fiscal year twenty-five.
That is for how many positions?
Four.
Okay, so, so this is what I don't understand. Code enforcement is a law enforcement officer. Why is the average, for four employees, you're only getting a fifteen thousand dollar raise between four people? And I know that one of those is director. But in the average uniform patrol division is almost four hundred thousand dollars. CID's almost a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And no CID doesn't have more than ten people.
That, that, that I don't know. I don't know that right off the top of my head. I'll be more than happy to share with you the individual raises.
Right, yeah. I'm, I'm not really understanding, understanding how that worked out. And then, um, and I would like to see the ranges. The other thing is, um, what about the people who were getting longevity pay? What happened to longevity pay?
So per your, um, direction during the conversation we had at the department head meetings, this actually takes place of the longevity. Uh, longevity was defined for, uh, the length of time. This program actually does that for you, but puts the emphasis on the hourly rate or the, the salary for the employees for the longevity that they've been in the county.
So, I'm, I'm looking at you, but I'm looking at Erica. What, what is, what are we usually actually paying out annually for longevity?
What longevity was, what'd you take out of longevity? It was three.
Three, about three hundred and fifty thousand.
It was three fifty-three and some change.
Yes.
And whose, whose budget did that come out of?
Out of each individual department budget.
Okay, so that, that cost is no longer added.
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
That's the definition of hybrid.
That's correct.
When we picked hybrid, that was the go-back for longevity pay. Remember, we weren't just going to look at. Remember, we weren't just going to look at pay. We said we wanted to count the people, how long they had been there, so.
So, they can have them, something for moving forward.
That's great. Now, proficiency pay, proficiency pays is still in the budget and will still be paid for employees who have reached a certain level of proficiency. So, that money was, remained in the budget.
But the proficiency pay and longevity, or like this hybrid, is based on like a percentage of their base pay, right? So, they don't, they don't stack. So, if you got longevity and then you have a 5 percent proficiency bonus or whatever, it's not on the new number, it's still on the base number.
That's correct.
Okay, this is what we, what we wanted. This is all being done. We're talking about the nuts and bolts. Now, this is really talking about our employees, you know, and everybody's going to be looking at each one of these things and saying, how come she, he got and I didn't?
Well, there's, there's math behind it. It's not that we picked favorites or whatever, it's, hey, here's.
Here's the study that was done, we paid to have it done and had it done, so that we could back into it, instead of just saying, we made some decision on this.
So, so what I, then what I would ask is that, are we saying that we're bringing people to mid-level of, of the range? Or are we taking them to the bottom of the range?
No ma'am, if, if the, the way the hybrid works, it's the, the number of years that they have been with the county is a 25 percent formula, and then the number of years inside of.
Number of years inside your class, current classification is 100 percent.
That's correct.
The other is 50 percent.
Oh, so it's 50 percent for the longevity. So, we actually are affording people a higher level of longevity pay as a result of this program. So, yes, if they have, if employee Y has been working with a department and they've been there for 20 years, and they've been the director for that department for five years, they get 15 years at the 50 percent and then five years at the 100 percent. So, it might actually take them beyond the mid-range. It may take them all the way to the top end.
So, what happens when they're topped out?
They're topped out.
Now, we actually originally, I think it was the board, agreed on the 3.5 million, is what we actually. And you're saying here.
Like 3.4 or some change?
Right, I mean, it's, it's, if we're doing it this way, Paige, we're saying it's 3.1.
The 3.1 is just for the general fine budget. The 3.5 included fire.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm saying.
And water.
Okay.
Okay, okay, that checks out. It was lower, I wasn't going to say it.
Oh, so maybe, I was thinking, folks, my dear.
Okay, if you've got individual questions you've got to get to about people, go see Steve about it specifically. We're not releasing that information at this time. It's going to be released as we go forward, but if you've got specific things you want to look at, where it is, how it is, go make an appointment and see the county manager. All right? All right, so everybody square on, this is moving forward. This is now getting ready to happen quickly.
Okay, my last question, I got a last question to ask about that, last question. So, I'm like, the things are so small, I couldn't see it either, those top 75 you're talking about. Some of those projects, on if I recall, we said we may move them to a SPOLOST. Are you putting them in here as well, or these, or have these been kind of segmented out?
So, that is all of the projects that we took away from the discussion. We have a SPOLOST sheet that's working right now, that we are a third of the way through ranking for internals that we will provide to the Board of Commissioners in the next week as well. The SPOLOST projects ranking does include those items that we identified inside of this room during our budget meeting as SPOLOST items. So, you will see those on the SPOLOST discussion. And they are very large items. The Station 8 Fire Department, that, that was on, we didn't feel like that should be on a project, because that would have taken us.
That's what I'm trying to make sure, that any of those items are not on the project list.
They are, they are not on the project list.
All right.
Great question.
Any other questions on that? All right, item number seven, discuss agreement for airport engineering design and/or planning assistance between Georgia Department of Transportation and the City of Griffin, Spalding County, and Griffin-Spalding County Water Airport Authority.
This is the agreement from Georgia DOT to begin funding of some design and engineering for, it is for the new airport, it is part of the fiscal year '24 state money. It's not part of the $47 million that we just got. So, there is a local match to this, it is $35,000. That's the match that you would normally split with the City of Griffin. I believe it will be staff's recommendation, airport staff's recommendation to the Airport Authority that that money, that $35,000 come out of, of its interest-bearing account, which has a balance, I believe, of about $250,000, so that there won't be any impact to the state, to the, the city and the county. But that will have to be approved by the Airport Authority at its meeting next week. It would be $17,000 that you would pay anyway.
Way too long, way too long. You should have gave us the street version.
The, so the street version is about maybe four or five pages long, because most of it is exhibits, there are identical exhibits for each of the three sponsors, and those exhibits just contain the general boilerplate language that is required by GDOT.
So, Steve, on the sheet that you gave us that listed all the departments, the coroner was coroner.
Autocorrect, autocorrect.
The other thing about this, Stephanie, that I shared with Steve, that I had a concern with, is as I read through all this, all of this paper, that there were multiple places where only the City of Griffin was to sign off.
Most of that was because there are, there are three sets of exhibits. So, one set of exhibits, exhibits is for the City of Griffin, one set of exhibits is for Spalding County, one set of exhibits is for the Airport Authority.
Okay, I, I, I thought I looked at it again today, but I, I'm not talking about the exhibits. I'm saying within the document.
Within the document itself, there's, there are signatures from all three sponsors.
I just wanted to make sure that, because what I read was basically saying the city required from the mayor, which is the City of Griffin. And I was pretty sure that was in that first 20 pages, not in the exhibit. So, I will make sure that I go back and look in that, look at that.
Okay. Do that, get ready to go.
So, when are we required to do this?
It is a very time-sensitive document, yes, yes sir.
All right.
That's tonight.
It, it is on the agenda for tonight.
Clay, is this on top of the 10, or is it 12 and a half instead?
I'm like, send it.
I'm sorry, what?
Oh, is this instead of the 10, or in addition to the 10?
This is the document that's.
Because 10, 10's automatic.
That's the 9.8? Yeah, that's.
In addition to the 10?
Well, that's the CDVG disaster relief, is the 9.8.
Yeah, he thinks it's, he's asking, is it in addition to?
It's not, it's not in addition.
No, it's not in addition to.
Them notifying us that we didn't see that.
They just said, good job on what.
Right. Commissioner Flowers-Taylor, the signature pages for the agreement itself are page 15, 16, 17, and those are, that, that's for all three bodies.
Okay.
So, anything else would have been the exhibits.
14 through 17, you said?
Yes ma'am.
We're a half hour from the next meeting.
I know.
Judge Thacker has been sitting here patiently. Are we focused to table this to another time, or are we going to go through it?
It's Judge Thacker on the, the workshop agenda.
He is, you added him to number eight during.
Oh, I wouldn't.
I'm glad you just did mine tonight, that's why.
What did he say?
I know you're a type of time cities. I'm happy to stay.
And we'll add you to number one.
Yeah.
No, I, I.
Oh, yeah, oh, oh, yeah. We'll add him to number one.
This is, this is pretty simple, it's pretty straightforward.
Is this time-sensitive?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I'm trying to get something locked in by July 1.
He's been sitting.
Yeah, and we're, we're like one of the first dominoes to fall, to.
I'm good if he wants to talk now, because I hate to have to grill him during our meeting.
I'm happy to be grilled whenever.
Because I have some specific questions that I want to ask.
All right, item number eight, discuss the intergovernmental agreement between the Spalding County Senate's Enforcement and the Spalding County State Court to supervise probationaries. Judge Thacker.
All right, and there's one very small change to that, which is that Superior Court came on board after I put this on the agenda, and I didn't have that confirmation when I sent it in. So, you have two contracts in your packet. You have one that says State Court and one that has Superior Court written on it. And I'm here for both courts. Judge Sam's gave me permission to stand here in his stead. The only changes are on the back page. So, when you get it in the packet and you go to the very last page, we are modifying the, some of the fees that our defendants are paying to make it more cost-neutral. We, for drug testing fees, we are charging $30. Like, most of the places in the retail world charge about 60. We charge 30, and we realize that what happens is, folks are testing, popping positive, I'm issuing a warrant, they're going to the jail, and then they're never coming back and paying for that test. And so, we are losing substantial amounts of money. Now, I can do the big long thing that I always do, but y'all just need to remember, we're a zero-dollar court, remember I always say that? That we waive everything we can, I've never had a hearing over money, because we waive it like open-handedly, double open-handedly. I'll do that if I have to do it tonight in a much longer version. But, so we're, we, we both courts want to raise it from 30 to $45. We believe that will be neutral.
For the drug test?
But, but really, does it cost, what does it cost you for the drug test? That, that's my concern, is that when we look at stuff, we look at, if we charge somebody a service, it's based on what it costs to provide that.
Yes, well, I didn't ask it that way to Director Matthews, she cannot be here tonight. What I asked her was, how much are we losing each month as a whole on the drug testings? That's the way I proposed it to her. So, I asked for it in the aggregate, and in the aggregate, we're losing 250 a month. And so, I said, well, look, am I correct in thinking that if we go to 45, we'll either be neutral or neutral slightly plus, depending on the averages? And that's, she said, yes, I need 45 to break even, and I said, that was it. So, I'm sorry I didn't get that exact number, I asked for a 30,000-foot flyover number.
So, to break even on the cost of administering the drug test, $45 means we break even, because there's several people that won't pay.
That's correct.
So, okay.
There's folks that just won't pay, and then there's folks that'll go to jail, and then they won't circle back and pay. And that's fine, it's just, it's the cost of doing business. So, that's, that's the first item. The second item that's on there for both courts, just so y'all are aware, is the, the intake fee. The felony intake fee is $50. Our intake fee was 25. I picked that number out of a hat when I first did it last year. And then when I realized that 50 was the state standard, I just wanted to bring us up to the state standard, so that we're charging the same fee as the rest of the cases. And so, that's what that is. That's the one-time intake fee that folks are paying as they're being brought into the system. And then on my end, we've got a, Mr. Dunn is very aware of this issue. The state, the, the one difference between my contract and Superior Court contract is that I would like to change my probation supervision fee from, to $51 per month. And again, I'll say it again, we open-handedly waive those things. I've never had a hearing in six years, because all they got to do is turn this one sheet in and it gets waived. But for those that can pay it, that'll keep all of our supervision fees the same, because we already had other supervision fees that were at 60. And that puts all of ours at 60, even, and it makes life easier for everybody. Superior Court's a little bit different. They also, they are stuck with the state, the state felony probation supervision fee, which is a much less.
Department of the state, yeah.
It's, yeah, they, they don't watch their people like we do. I'll just say it gently like that. And their fee is, I think, less than $40. I think it's like 31. And they only get $31 worth of supervision out of it, if I might just say it that way, too. So, so, so that's my last request. So, it's three items. You can look through the body of it, but you don't have to, because the only change I made in there is the effective date, which is July 1, 2024. That's the very fast version that I can give you of why I'm here.
The other point to hit, Judge Thacker, is that Superior Court virtually never waives those fees. You've got to jump through a flaming hoop to get those fees waived up there. They're, they're lower, but one officer's going to have 2,000 people, as opposed to what we have on, on the state court level as well.
Yeah, 300, 275.
You know what I mean? So, yeah.
So, that's it.
They're also state subsidized.
And, and the reason why we're time-sensitive is because, once you all approve it, I have a series of hoops I've got to go jump through with the state, where these have to go get blessed by, by the state NPU, misdemeanor probation oversight unit. And they have to bless it before it can go live, and I need that done before July 1. As always, everything always has the next step.
Okay.
So, I'm concerned, because other people are going to be paying for people who can't pay for themselves. And maybe that's how business runs, but I, I, I don't have a good feeling about your court charging more than what it costs for you to do that.
Sure.
You're, you're making, you're charging other people because somebody else won't pay their bill. And then, you said you're going from 25 to 50 for the.
Intake fee. Because the state intake fee is $50. And I picked the 25 randomly when I set it up.
So, when you said that $50 intake fee, and you said it was pretty much across the board statewide, is that what they're doing in the surrounding counties, is that what they're doing throughout the whole state?
It's by statute. So, it says that all, all cases going in through the Superior Court shall pay a one-time $50 intake fee. And that's where I found it and went, oh, we're charging the wrong intake fee. It's $50. And so, I was just bringing us.
The monthly fees in other places are higher.
I didn't check the date, but.
But I'm just saying, has it been there 10 years? Because clearly, intake would be more than $50. What, what would they do if you said intake should be $60 or $75?
Well, what was the $1,000 worth, worth in 1960 when they first set it up? Now, $1,000 in 1960 was a substantial amount of money. So, if we did that math, then misdemeanor fines should be somewhere in the range of $5,000.
Well, it, it, it doesn't really work that way, because the poverty level was $6,000 in 1962, and it's the same thing now. And nobody can live off $6,000 a year. So, so I'm saying that to say, I would be more comfortable with this if you were saying, it actually cost us $57.50 to process this, but to cover our costs, this is what the additional is. So, and I know you grabbed something out of the air, and I'm not mad at you about that, but if you're going to raise it, is that based on the amount, the cost of what it takes for you to do that? And then, the additional amount that? So, first, I would like to know how much it costs for you to do it.
So, the answer is, those are divided, because it's, one of them's a yes and one of them's a not. The drug testing is a yes. We're trying to just bring the cost of drug testing to even. We're losing 250 a month. We think if we go up by $15 per test, because it's not a humongous volume of tests. We're not testing everybody. And so, that one is trying, I mean, frankly, if somebody gets a, if you gave everybody a benefit as a retail business, then you wouldn't ever make any money. You've got to, you've got to balance it all somewhere. And I just reminded everybody, we're a zero-dollar court, except for restitution, never had a hearing on this. But then as far as the intake fee, the only reason I'm changing that one is because I went to the statute and it says that cases going in through Superior Court shall be $50. And so, I said, well, hey, we should be consistent where possible. And so, I said, let's change that to 50, so that it's consistent with the statute. So, so it's, that's why I'm trying to tap dance with your question, because on one side, the answer is, yes, it's cost-based, and we're trying to neutralize that. On the other one, it's statutory-based, and I'm just trying to be consistent with the state statute. Superior Court felony, that's why I didn't see it, because it's Superior Court, I'm State Court, and I missed it. Does that help? I'm trying. I'm really trying.
And the, and the, the argument that you have for Judge Sam's court is, what, what again?
So, they're doing the same thing I'm doing, except they're not changing their supervision fee, so.
Because that's set by the state.
Because their fee is lower.
They're increasing their drug screening fee?
Yes.
To?
$45, same as us. It's the exact same changes on two of the three.
But, but commercially, a drug screen costs you about $85.
Yeah, sure.
So, so I'm just trying to see why, you know, why we're at 45. Not that it needs to be marketed.
Yeah.
See what I'm saying? If it, if it costs that much.
Yeah, because we're just trying to break even, that's it.
But, but do we get them cheaper? Because we're only paying 45 instead of 60?
Director Matthews is constantly seeking vendors to try to find a, a better deal.
It sounds like you're just being consistent.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
So, that's correct. So, but yeah, I mean, obviously, if we can come up with a better. So, but yeah, I mean, obviously, if we can come up with a better, cheaper system, but obviously, we also have a major quality control issue because the results of these things can very likely result in jail, and so, we have to make certain that we can absolutely trust...
Or very expensive hearings when us lawyers go, "Wait a minute, I don't like this test," and then we got to pay everybody.
How much is that going to cost us more?
What is going to cost us more?
What you're asking, I know you're saying that you're revenue-neutral.
Oh, this doesn't cost you all anything. These are all items paid by the defendants or waived by me. This has zero, this is zero impact on the county.
But citizens are impacted, let's make sure.
Yes.
So, people that have pled guilty or been found guilty at trial.
And are probation, so not your tickets that get paid. I should just be very careful with that.
Yeah, and we're sentenced to probation, yeah.
Yeah, there's two different sides of the coin we look at, what we're doing to citizens and what we're doing to our budget.
And don't forget, this will get reviewed by the state of Georgia as well, and obviously, if they flag it, then I'll let you know, but we are under the impression that this should be okay.
And I'm not trying to beat you up, but we're in a place over here ourselves where our fees are like horrendously out of sync with what's happening, and that's why I'm asking you these questions.
He's trying to break it into...
To make sure that you recapture...
Yes.
Make sure you recapture what it costs, and from that recapture point, then if you think that the difference to make up the difference for everyone else is $20, or if it's $25, then that's what should go on top of what your expense has been.
I'm tracking you now, and the answer is, I didn't do it in those words, but that is what I asked for Director Matthews, and that is the number she gave me to say, "These are the numbers I need to make sure we're consistent across both courts and neutral." And again, none of this comes from you all. And again, I waive, I've never had a hearing on somebody not paying. We don't do that, but I have to say that enough to where you want to scream at me and tell me not to do it because that's how judges get removed from the bench.
Well, how do you, how come you have to ask us about this in such a way?
Because the state of Georgia doesn't want judges just willy-nilly deciding fees
because they, you know, decided they were grumpy one day and they just changed all the fees, like, you know? Just, everybody needs a boss, everybody needs a boss, and...
Is everybody good for tonight?
Yes, yes, yes.
Look, I got to say, whether it's, if it's a young black male, old white lady, or an Asian, all three of which I had in his court today, this morning, like when we were talking about the fine numbers or the probation fees, they were like, "Yeah, fine, I'm not going to jail. Yeah, fine, I'm not getting points. Yeah, fine, my licensing gets suspended." That said, the second they go, "Oh, boy, I can't pay that," Judge Thacker will, they don't have to. So, I mean, I think this is an automatic win.
You're not trying to put people in jail, you know what I'm saying? I just want to make sure that you're actually not going to be in a place where, oops, we should have probably said this was $15.
If you're in the Spalding County jail under my signature, you have worked very hard to get there, and I am going to honor that effort because we do everything we can not to put you in jail under my signature.
Staff positions, thumbs up?
So, I would like to ask that we amend the agenda this evening to put him close, as close as we can to in the business.
You all are very...
As first?
He's already in the business, that's number one.
I'm just grateful that you let me have a spot on your...
All right.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
You left it there in the work session.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say if you're fine by raising your hand. We're adjourned. Next meeting is in 15 minutes.